Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we had a closed session before the public meeting, I'd like to ask the city manager to report out from the closed session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the council held a closed session at 6:00 PM this evening to continue its process with regards to the confidential process with regards to the city attorney recruitment. No decisions were made and future meetings will be scheduled.
Okay, thank you. Go call.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. Anybody want to make any changes to the agenda?
I have one.
Okay.
I'd like to close in memory of a longtime Brisbane resident, Eleanor Blanchard. And Ellie lived here sixty-plus years in Brisbane and both of her daughters grew up here and her husband Larry is still here and got three brothers and a sister still here, so. Their funeral was today. So I'd like to close in memory of Eleanor Blanchard.
Do you want to make a motion for the amended agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have an agenda and we have oral communications number one and we have two requests, first from Mr. Carlos Martin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Carlos Martin and I'm running for city council in South San Francisco in November and I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself to Brisbane and the city council members here and to open a dialogue with Brisbane and South San Francisco. I think our cities are very connected, we share a similar path. You're probably familiar with our biotech community in South San Francisco. We have over a hundred biotech companies in the city. I believe it's a hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty at last count, employing over thirteen thousand people in that area. So many of those people are likely residents of Brisbane and rely on employment opportunities there to maintain their livelihood. There's other important relationships that our city has with Brisbane, for example, environmental impact. I stand for being environmentally responsible and working towards sustainable programs within the city and I want to make sure that we pursue these programs that will be beneficial not only to South San Francisco, but the neighboring communities, particularly Brisbane and other neighboring cities. So I just wanted to say hello. Thank you very much for the opportunity and I look forward to speaking with you all in the future. Thank you.
Okay, nice to hear the call.
Good luck.
Okay, and we have another request from Mr. Anthony Valdez.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm here this evening to introduce myself. My name is Anthony Valdez and I'm the newest addition to San Mateo County Supervisor Adrianne Tissier's office and the county offices are in Redwood City. She asked me to come here on her behalf this evening to extend our office's support in any way that we can. I was reading through the agenda this evening and I noticed that there is a letter to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors this evening, so I just wanted to note that I would make sure that she gets it tomorrow and if there's anything that our office can do, just please let us know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Good to come. Jamie Dunn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, municipal council folks, staff and fellow citizens. I had to write a few notes down because this was so important to me, I thought, I just don't want to forget anything, but I probably will. I'll give it my best shot. I'm really sad these days. I've been very sad and I've been acting very defensively. I think it's because I'm sad, but in any case, I've tried to figure this out so that I could share it with you because I think it's important. Lately, and I'd say in the last five, six months, I've been hearing the phrase, "Fresh, young, new faces." We want fresh, young, new faces involved in the city. When I was young, we had a phrase, "Don't trust anybody over thirty." Most of you up there don't remember that, but I'm old enough to remember not to trust anybody over thirty. Well, that eliminates an awful lot of folks, a lot of really smart people and experienced people and people that really care. Now, this issue of, incidentally, I spent some time at the last ARP convention in San Francisco with a woman named Adrian Berg. Adrian Berg is a person who, some years ago when Oprah had her show, Adrian was on several times as a speaker and she speaks to many groups about aging. And she's the one, incidentally, who coined the phrase, "The bold generation." And I learned there that we don't live a longer old life, we live a longer middle life. So that sort of gives us, people aren't middle-aged, at the end of being middle-aged, they're fifty anymore, they're middle-aged until they're sixty-five, et cetera, et cetera. So the reason I'm sad about this is this, that we aren't being fair to the people who are younger. We're not giving them any hope. We're saying to them, "We want fresh, young, new faces, the rose on the bloom," and what does that say to them? I said to one of these women not too long ago in a casual way, we were having coffee and I said, "You know, you're going to be seventy someday too," and she went, "No." And I thought, "Oh, how sad. Doesn't you want to be seventy?" I said, "Do you really want to die young?" My partner died at forty-five. What a tragedy, that you would lose your life, that you would have to give it up, that you wouldn't have a future to forward to, that at a certain age, these kinds of phrases like, "Don't trust anybody over thirty" or "Don't trust anybody over fifty" or something of the sort would kind of get back in. That's a great loss to all of us because if something tragic happened in this town, you can be sure that everybody who could suit up would suit up and be there to work and there wouldn't be a thing said about age, gender, anything, there would be nothing that would matter except, you know, will you help, can you help, what are you going to do, et cetera. And I think that's the nexus of how I hope the city works, is that we all suit up at whatever age we are. And so I'm going to, the reason I'm talking about it tonight is that I'm actually trying to help myself get over the sadness of hearing this because I feel like if this is pervasive and if it's getting into city government, then that's a thing that should, we should be careful about because then it has something to do with the way you govern and the way you lead and so forth. So... I'm hoping that if it's happening, that we have a time for reflection and that we think about where we are in life. I frankly, my fresh, young face of twenty and into thirties, let me tell you, I made more mistakes at that time in my life than I've ever made and as I get older, I'm hoping I don't make more. I have a feeling that I can't possibly make as many as I did. And that isn't to say other younger folks are making those mistakes, I'm just saying that was me and I'm happy that I got to seventy, almost seventy-one. I'm happy about that and I'm hoping that as a city, that we look carefully at how to do things intergenerationally, we look out for our kids as best we can and we all do, regardless of what age we are. And we look out for seniors in a way, and I say that in a way because we look at the seniors if they act like the traditional elderly seniors, but active seniors, we're sort of like, quite frankly, they're middle-aged and they may be middle-aged into their late seventies because we tend to work that long and have to work that long. So this is my attempt to share with you these thoughts that I'm having because I've really been acting defensively about it and being kind of angry that, darn it, you know, let's not start that again, let's not go back to those, "Oh, don't trust anybody over thirty." Let's bring this town together so that everybody has a place and that we look out for each other and we don't look at any specifics of a person that may be, that we could discriminate with. And I'm speaking on behalf of only myself. I mean, I'm delighted when I hear from Dolores Gomez. I love it because she's a smart lady. I'm happy to be in a group that enuliums because I'm learning something. I like to be wherever I can learn something. That was one of the reasons that I really liked it. I spent a day with this woman that coined the phrase, "The bold generation" and it sort of helped, you know, the aging process for me. So thank you for the time and good luck with the race. I sent a message to someone today saying, "I hope we've talked to the kids up at Lippman and asked them if they want to be volunteers because that really gets them into knowing what a race is about and maybe it would encourage them to be part of it and maybe the city would do something nice like give them a certificate gratitude of volunteering on something for the city." So, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jamie. Yeah, I think we agree that everybody ought to participate, whatever. Okay, anyone else like to give an oral communication? All right, seeing no other requests, we move on to the next item on the agenda, a presentation we've been looking forward to for some time, arranged by Karen Cunningham, I believe, or at least she was a big part of it. And that is a presentation by Dr. Monica Rutterger, I hope I'm pronouncing that correct, on feral cat population issues. We're ready in all ears.
Good evening, and I'm not Dr. Rutterger, but this is Dr. Rutterger, my name is Kay Jones.
Hi.
And we're going to just give you a brief overview of what the services are available here for feral cats, but also what is going on in San Mateo County. Coastal California has a huge feral cat problem as do a lot of the temperate climate. Mediterranean Europe is another one where you can find huge feral cat populations, Italy, Greece, Israel. So in these places, what happens is we don't have a harsh winter to kill cats off and because of the temperate climate, the females can have four litters of kittens a year. So the population very quickly expands. Right now, we are working on a backyard hoarding, it's not really a hoarding situation, just got out of control in Moss Beach. We have caught twelve cats in the past thirty-six hours and Dr. Rutterger spayed and neutered eight of them today. So we're, in San Mateo County, there, I wish that we could, I could say that it's really organized, but it's sort of more of a grassroots effort with a lot of independent rescuers doing what we call trap-neuter-return. This is the only scientifically proven method of reducing feral cat populations, is to spay and neuter them and then allow the colonies, we call them, to dwindle through attrition. Australia tried a different method. At one point, they decided their feral cat population was so bad, they decided to let people shoot them and actually were quite surprised to find that the population increased because while the cats were out of commission, the food population greatly increased and so in came the cats. We also had a similar situation with that in San Mateo County where it's actually away on the other side of San Bruno Mountain Park, where they, there were about thirty cats in the park, people were trying to get them spayed and neutered, but could not get permission. Finally, the cats were forcibly removed and within one year, there were sixty cats. So trap-neuter-return is really the best method so that you don't create what we call the vacuum effect. You remove the cats, the food supply goes up and then they will simply multiply. The basic problem, of course, is humans who don't get their pets spayed and neutered. They let them go outside, the next thing you know, the hormones kick in and they are out and producing and very often don't even come home, sometimes they do, but that's how feral cat populations start. So it's really a human problem that we have this bad feral cat problem and humans have to solve it. We brought, in addition, Dr. Rutterger will speak in a moment, but tonight also, we have a group of very dedicated cat rescue people over here. The Rose, we're all experienced trappers. We can lend support, we can give guidance, especially for large populations like this backyard colony that we're working on now. We still have, it's up to twenty cats possibly there, so we still have a few more to go. But in big situations like that, we can help with coordination efforts, but we couldn't do it without her, so.
Well, thank you and thank you for inviting me. I am the founder and chief veterinarian at the Nine Lives Foundation in Redwood City and I've been a veterinarian for fifteen years and thirteen of those fifteen years, I've been working with cat rescuers and I went out on my own in 2003 to form my foundation for, basically, the sole reason was to support other cat rescue groups who are going out and doing the work of trying to control the populations of cats. The reason that the work that these ladies do is so important and how it impacts, my mission and my foundation is that we, my group, my foundation is in charge of or focused on keeping the number of cats that are needlessly euthanized at shelters down. So we want to try to help prevent as many cats from entering the shelter system as we can, therefore lowering the amount of cats, the numbers of cats that are euthanized. And it is unfortunate that this Bay Area does not either understand or embrace the idea of trap-neuter-return because cats are allowed to multiply, as Kay was mentioning, in backyards and in one year, you can take a population of four cats and you can create a population of forty cats or fifty cats or sixty cats in just one year from those. Those young cats are multiplying and if a feral cat or a stray cat or a house cat can have four litters per year, an average of six kittens per litter, that's twenty-four kittens that this cat, one cat, has introduced into this community. And of those twenty-four, at four months of age, of those twenty-four, those will start reproducing. So you do the math and just by leaving one or two unfixed cats in a very short period of time, you have just an enormous population of unwanted animals who then stray from the backyard, seeking out other areas where there might be more food sources and they either end up being rounded up and taken to humane societies or animal shelters where they're euthanized or they go out and they kind of find rural areas where they can find rodents and lizards and things like that to feed on. So if we start at home by helping to educate everyone about the importance of spaying and neutering, that's where it all starts. Our feral cat population, these cats didn't ask to be let out. They were taken in by a person who did not take responsibility, let out before they were fixed. They then go have a litter and as Kay said, most of the time, they don't come back home again. They take their kittens, they find a safe place, the kittens grow up, they've created their own little feral cat colony. And feral is so unfortunate a word because it, most of the time, these feral cats are just cats with unfortunate circumstances. They are not evil, they are not going to attack you, they are just trying to survive because they've been let out and basically left to their own devices and nature and they're going to keep reproducing. So our job and my job as a veterinarian at Nine Lives Foundation is to support these cat rescue people who are going out spending, you know, so many sleepless nights trapping these cats and putting them back so that new cats don't start coming in to take their place. So communities that trap cats and take them to PHS or any city shelter because they think if we get rid of them, we euthanize them, the population will go away, you actually, as Kay was mentioning, I've seen it happen too, you're going to introduce, you know, three or four more for every cat that you remove. Spayed and neutered animals in a feral cat area will stabilize the population and their population will gradually, will die off. And that's the key to controlling the population explosion. So Nine Lives, I'm available, I work five days a week as a routine, but I'm also, I do spay-neuter for these ladies on Saturdays and Sundays. I'll come in on Sunday night if I have a pregnant animal that I need to help so that she doesn't have her kittens and we have even more cats to deal with. So I am here to lend my support to the city in any way that I can. I'd like to help with some way to introduce the city of Brisbane to my foundation and I will be more than happy to produce materials. I've used door hangers before in East Palo Alto in Redwood City to introduce the idea of spaying and neutering and why it's so important and, you know, here's all the information you need to know. So, you know, I'm sorry, I'm going on and on and you probably want statistics. These are, statistics and trends are more probably Kay's area than mine, but I've seen firsthand in the last fourteen years doing this, that I have probably spayed and neutered ten to fifteen thousand animals just by myself and the effect that I've had, if I did the math, I mean, it's just, it's extraordinary. I do work for a small community that you may have heard of in the Central Valley called Los Danos, Los Danos, off of Highway Five and One Fifty-Two and I've been working there with a volunteer group and go down, every month, we do between thirty and fifty female cats and we're on, we're going into our second year. We have reduced the population of cats entering the city shelter by sixty-five percent. And when the city realized how much money we were saving them, the animals that they didn't have to process and the animals that they didn't have to kill and the bodies they didn't have to dispose of, they started to support us. And now are providing vouchers for the residents of Los Danos to promote spaying-neutering and help us get the word out. It's just, the response has been overwhelming in the community and we're not seeing kittens born in the fields anymore and we're not seeing animals dead on the road because we're getting these cats, fixing them, returning them back to their areas, which is stabilizing the population and then kittens aren't being brought in by boxfuls anymore into the city shelter, which is overwhelmed and everybody's running out of money. So they're very grateful that we've done this. And so in two years, we've just made an enormous impact on the community and I feel like Brisbane is a small enough community that we could actually have such an impact if we were to do this next year. I think the numbers of cats that wouldn't end up at PHS, Peninsula Humane Society, would be staggering if we were to get on board right away, especially in this season. This is kitten season right now, February, March, April, and the extraordinary number of kittens are born. If we get on this now, by next spring, the amount of kittens, or the number of kittens you'll see will be dramatically decreased. So this is an issue that's, it's extremely urgent that we get on this, especially right now, and help the community to understand why it's important that we not only fix them but put them back and not just remove them. That's probably the worst thing to do. It seems counterintuitive, but that's just, that's what happens and you have to have been doing it for a long time, like we have, to understand the impact that this has. So I will be available. This is an example of something that I produced for my foundation to help the, I was targeting the low-income people in East Palo Alto and in Redwood City and we produced a door hanger in English and in Spanish and our theme is "Got Cats, Get 'Em Fixed." Every day, hundreds of unwanted cats and kittens are killed in shelters around the Bay Area. An unfixed female can produce more than three hundred kittens in her lifetime. Spaying and neutering is the key to ending the tragedy of cat overpopulation and I think that's what we're talking about, whether it's a house cat or a feral cat or a stray cat or a cat that's been abandoned. And in this economy, there are so many cats that are just let go, especially in a nice rural area like this. When someone has lost their home, they're going to just turn their cat out and so many times, they're not fixed. So they become part of the feral cat population. They're not feral, they're just, they're unfortunately left to fend for themselves. They have to then seek out food sources and then they become part of this group that is so unwanted. So it's very sad, it's not the cat's fault and we're here to stand up for the cats and to help control the population and support the community so that it's not overrun with cats and kittens.
We also brought with us a couple of articles which we will give to you perhaps, so that if any of you would like to see them, one article on the vacuum effect and one on TNR in general and some of the research that's been done and those are from Alley Cat Allies, which is the national advocacy group for feral cats. Do you have any questions?
I do. So this obviously would take some labor of some volunteers who would be term trappers like these ladies here and how would you view a program like that would work, function in Brisbane?
So we could give you any assistance in sort of setting it up, give some advice. You know, unfortunately, most of us have trapping lists as long as you're armed and we're just frantic and sleepless at this season, but we can certainly help give advice and I think you have some, a couple of experienced people in Brisbane already and so we would be willing to help with that. And as we say, with any large-scale thing, a lot of times, all of us will kick in and help each other out. So, because it does take a lot of traps and it's a lot of time, I estimate that it takes about ten hours of time per cat to prepare for the trapping, to do, to get a hold of the traps, to do the trapping, transport to the spay-neuter clinic, transport back, hold them and then release them. It's about ten hours of time per cat. It is, it's a lot of work, but it's worth it. You know, we still euthanize, the Peninsula Humane Society still euthanizes a lot of cats every year and it's, all I can say is that when we do this, they won't be going into the, you know, shelter and they won't be producing any that have to get euthanized.
And I think it would be really important for us to work with you and set up, you know, community meetings or trainings. There are so many wonderful instructional videos by the Alley Cat Allies group and we can, we can show people that it is, I mean, yes, it is time-intensive and it can take, it's about ten hours from start to finish, but it's as easy for some of the residents to put a trap in their backyard with some tuna fish in it and let the cat come in, the trap goes down and then the trap is picked up and carried to the clinic. And maybe, you know, maybe there would be a way to set up a transport system so that the residents don't have to actually drive to Redwood City. I'm sure we can arrange that. But trapping is not as difficult. I think there's a perception that it's something, that it's inhumane, that it might hurt the animal and that it's very difficult. It basically involves setting a trap with a lever on it and food at the end and then you walk away and the cats are hungry and they go in and the trap goes down and that's it. So, you know, we, our organization lends out traps day and night and usually the people come back and they think that's very invigorating, "Oh, I got one." And then the next day, "I got another one." And they realize what they're doing and the impact it's having on their neighborhood and they're on board with it. So it's all about education and I, we would be more than willing to speak in front of groups, if there are any residents who might want to come to a Saturday or a Sunday informational meeting, bring the traps, show them how it works.
Do you have other issues like with raccoons and stuff like that or skunks falling into the traps?
Right, so that Alley Cat, so first of all, the feeding, so you don't put food out at night and that's one thing we train, you know, people when we're explaining this and Alley Cat Allies is actually very strict about, you know, you don't put out food to attract raccoons and so forth, but then you also don't trap at night. We close our traps up at dark usually unless we're doing what we call drop trapping, which we have, a drop trap is about yea-high, about three feet by three feet, it's propped up with a stick and we put the food under it and we wait for the cat we want to come under to eat and then we pull the string. So if we have to trap after dark, that's usually what we do. If I'm really desperate, I'll use a humane trap and not lock the back door and I carry a broom so that I can lift up and let the raccoon go if I get one. You know, here and there, we do get wildlife, we let them go really fast and, but we never, we tell people, "You don't leave traps out overnight, you try to avoid..." You try to avoid trapping after dark," and that usually works fine.
And to start a feeding program, if you're going to try to attract the cats that you want to trap, you start your program in the morning so that they're trained to come at 7:00 AM or 8:00 AM. Raccoons are sleeping by then, they're out at night. The cats, we want to start training them to come to the yards or come to the field at the time where we're not going to trap the animals that we don't want to. I mean, every now and then, there'll be opossum or something that's out at 7:00 AM, but it's really not that common. So, it is really not very difficult and, but it has such a huge impact. Every single cat that I fix, every female cat that I fix, I do the math on that and I think, okay, that's 300 kittens, but she's not going to have this ever in her lifetime. And if I do 40 a day, which I often do, 40 to 50 surgeries a day, it's staggering. It really is. And it's, I feel like my day has meant something. It really has. It's amazing. So, any questions?
Yeah, I do thank you, Ms. Moore. The Humane Society, what is their policy towards the catch, neuter and release?
So, they, they support, they support this to the extent that we, they have, they can do five spay neuter surgeries per day, Tuesday through Friday for feral cats. What's that?
Do you have to have a specific time?
You have to call and make an appointment and you can bring them in. So, they certainly support this, but they don't have enough room, they don't have the resources. And so, right now, any feral cat that is surrendered, if a person comes in and says, "I caught this cat in my backyard and I don't want it," 100% of those are euthanized.
Okay, so they're, okay. Just because they don't have the capacity to implement your program and release the animals?
The one place around here, I think it's Silicon Valley, right, started doing it or was it San Jose?
San Jose.
They've started doing the release, they've started doing trap neuter release, but our local humane, as far as I know, they just say that they don't have the resources.
The program in San Jose, City of San Jose has implemented, well, it's actually some cat rescuers who work with City of San Jose have done something called Feral Freedom. And in the last two years, their TNR program has reduced the population coming into their shelter by 80%.
Okay.
So, they used to see, you know, if they saw 5,000 cats and kittens that they euthanized every year, now, you know, they're hardly having cats come through and being housed in the shelter anymore because they're brought through, they're surgically altered and then they're released back to their own location. So, it's had an amazingly, the financial impact on the city has been tremendous and they've turned around and they have been offering extraordinarily low fees for their spay neuter because they see that they're saving money on the other end, or on the other side, by not having to house these cats and euthanize them and unfortunately care for the bodies. So, they're offering spay neuter and promoting it. And it's, I would love to see our community modeling after that one, but I think at this point, as Kay said, Peninsula Humane Society doesn't have the capacity. I am able and have done on many days between 30 and 50 of these ferals a day. And I don't require appointments. You can drop off at any time of day. They can be housed overnight in our facility and a lot of the places do require appointments and you have to come by 7:15 or they close the door. So, that is very inconvenient for people who are trapping and they want to do the right thing, but they get there with the cat at 9:30 and I'm sorry, do you have an appointment? No, and it's after 7:15 and they'll go and take the cat and release it again because they don't know what to do with a cat in a feral trap. So, I've tried very hard to make our organization accessible to everyone. Seven days a week, you can drop a cat off for surgery. If I'm not there, we house it overnight and we do it the next day.
In fairness, by the way, the reason Peninsula Humane Society does only five feral cats today is because they're also doing dogs, rabbits, socialized cats and then, so they leave five spots for feral.
Just for feral. So, yes, it's not that they, that's all they want to do, but they, they are very overwhelmed with the rest of the populations that they deal with, so.
And what, what could the City of Brisbane do to help your cause? What are you, what are you looking for from the city?
I think to help get awareness and that this is the way to go. We also realize that this is a difficult thing for the community sometimes because some people are very against the feral cats. So, there needs to be education and awareness about what's being done, why it's being done. And we can certainly help with that. We can, you know, again, speak to meetings or whatever if you, if you sense any community resistance, but, you know, getting some people interested in it is the best and promoting spay neuter.
Okay, so that's what you're looking for from the city, just get the word out?
Absolutely, get the word out and help, you know, if we were to come up with something like this for the City of Brisbane with the information that you wanted to convey to your residents, to support us going and delivering them or getting them to all the residents and making it part of the community's plan because it really is beneficial to everyone who lives here, whether you love cats or don't love cats and, you know, whether you have a beautiful garden and you don't want cats coming in and unfortunately using your potting soil as a litter tray. It really does impact every single citizen, even if they don't realize it, it does. And it's too easy to take a cat and just take it to the Humane Society and have it euthanized because there's going to be another one there tomorrow and we just need to let people know that. And not to be afraid of cats that are called feral cats. I've had so many people call me, they think that they're going to be rabid and they're going to spread disease and their dog is going to catch something from the cat and, you know, there are all these misconceptions and it's really sad because the cats are seen as villains and they're just trying to survive. So, I think that's how we could help our cause.
Jerry?
I've listened to, I've seen their presentation on the trap neuter and release program and was very impressed with the dedication that all these people have to helping the strays that are here and to keep the population down. We have a problem out at our marina where people have been dumping cats and, and the hard part is that other people come and feed them, but they're all random, being fed randomly. And so, we've got a couple actually that are pregnant out there right now and, so, it's something that I would like to see implemented and to see how we can support it and get the word out so that we can create the program that we can keep the population down. So, I would like to be able to discuss it with council and with staff to see how we can implement this and get the program on board.
And these coordinating the feeders is another thing that we can help. We can show them plans, we can show them ways that we have done it in other feral cat colonies to coordinate feeding. We post signs and actually, very often, we have to put them right on the ground or the people who are feeding won't see them. We put them right on the ground and we say, "This colony is fed by regular feeders, you know, every day, please do here."
Please do not feed them at 10 o'clock at night or, if there's any way we could help you with those pregnant cats that are down at the marina, today or tomorrow would be not soon enough.
Yeah.
I'll give you my card.
Yeah. I have one question that came up just by what you said in your most recent comments. Some of the problems that some people have with, quote, "feral cats" is that many of them are quite diseased. And at least that's experience that's been brought to my attention by some people. And one of the consequences of being diseased, as I'm sure you know, is they leave calling cards which smelled awful. And so, the question becomes, when cats like that come in, what do you do?
Well, that's probably a question for me to answer.
Yeah, well, and Alley Cat Allies has a ton of information about that also.
Right. So, I, in my no-kill mission, I, you know, I'm very clear that I will not ever euthanize a healthy cat for any unreasonable reason, but there have been many occasions where I've had very sickly cats come in and trapped and I don't think it's humane to allow them to go back out because no one is going to tend to their medical care going forward. So, I've often had to make that call. It doesn't happen very often, I mean, luckily, it doesn't happen more than probably once or twice a month that I see a really diseased cat, but I will do everything I can to address whatever the medical issue is and a lot of times, it's actually quite simply addressed and fixed. But I'm not, we're not going to advocate turning animals out that can't, can't get the care they need. That's not fair. We're not doing anyone any good and especially the cats. So, it's all about what's best for the animal and if it's a really, you know, a rack of bones and it can't even go and try to find a rodent to eat, why would we want to put it back out there? So, I think, and that's a judgment call that I have to make, but I will, I will go to all ends of the earth for feral cats and I will not ignore absestors and I will not ignore parasites. I won't do that. We'll fix what we can and we'll let them go back out. Oftentimes, I keep, as Kaywell knows, I say, "I'm not letting that one go back out. That one's too old and it lives in my shelter." So, I hope we could address that issue and assure the public that we're not going to put back diseased animals, that that wouldn't be right for anyone.
And the second part of that, which is that they leave the calling cards, that's what there is a ton of information. There are all kinds of tips on the internet and especially Alley Cat Allies on keeping the cats out of your yard or giving them perhaps an alternate place to go if they're really insistent. So, so it's a, you know, so that there were sort of two parts to your question. So, that Alley Cat Allies and, like I said, a lot of other resources on the internet for that, keeping them out of your yard.
And if we're able in the city, in the community to establish sort of feral cat groupings where it could kind of pull them away from the residents, you know, there are many communities that have them located and they're designated colonies and they're well-managed and there are populations that, you know, the feeders know, they see a new cat or they see something that's not right. If you, if we're able to set those up, it's a lot easier to assure the residents that these cats probably aren't going to keep coming and bothering them. If they know they have a safe place to go and eat, we can direct them to a place that's supervised. And that's really key to setting up feeding stations and not expecting residents to have feral cats living in their backyard, but, but setting it up so that the cats have somewhere to go. Other questions?
Yeah, no, it's very interesting. We've had a, we have a committee, Advisory Citizens Committee that Karen Cunningham knows about. She's on the planning commission, but there's another group called the Open Space and Ecology Committee, which has been looking into this issue. And hopefully, I don't know whether you've been in contact with them or talking with them, but it was seen to me that, I was thinking also of seeing what kind of program and what kind of cooperation we can develop because, you know, we do have a lot of cats in this condition, as you, sure you know. So, it might be something that we could ask them to put their heads together on and come up with a recommendation for the council to consider and of course, in the process, we would hope to be able to consult with you all.
Well, even, maybe even before then, we could, you know, they could write an article, put it in the Star.
Oh, sure.
We could put it on our website.
Sure.
Contact information perhaps, if that's something that the council will.
Provide the link to the, what was the name?
Nine Lives Foundation.
Nine Lives Foundation, but also to the, what was the term you used?
Alley Cat Allies.
Alley Cat Allies. Provide the internet link, link to that on the city's website. That way, it doesn't require too much, right?
Yeah, we can start that right away.
Yeah, and then do a follow-up article, maybe include in, maybe that's where you want, you know, without it being too big, but who would be the contact person on it to start a program?
Right.
And be able to get these folks back to do some training.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we teach trapping classes, we, you know, all kinds of things we can do to support.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are they still here?
Just for clarification, once a cat has been spayed and neutered and then is returned, Dr. Reddick spayed and neutered the feral cat that adopted my family and she was back out in our yard within 24 hours. Can you just speak to that just for a second because there was a couple of people asking that question? Once we spay and neuter a cat, how long before it can actually go back into the environment?
So, I think I am unique in that I, I believe that the cat should be returned either the same day or the following morning. I know there are different schools of thought on that. My only exception to that, if I have a pregnant cat, that we've had to abort the kittens, which, which is a very difficult subject for many people, but it's for the greater good that we take the kittens and not allow them to be born. A feral cat who's been pregnant or a stray cat that's been pregnant should have at least one to two days of recovery time, but spay neuter techniques are so efficient now with such minimally invasive, you know, the incisions are this long, that there's really minimal recovery time. And my protocol, my drug protocol allows the cat to be fully awake within 10 minutes of surgery. So, I can have them re-released that evening or the following day. So, there shouldn't be a long lag time for, for either citizens or my rescue groups to recover them. And if I feel that there's a cat who's particularly, needs a little bit more time, I actually house them at no charge for, at my foundation and I'll watch over them for a couple of days if I know they're going into a particularly treacherous area where they're going to need a little extra TLC. So, yeah, that is a concern. You know, there are, there are agencies who recommend a week to keep a cat in a trap, which I find as the most inhumane thing you could ever do to an animal. I want to get them in and out of that trap as quickly as possible and return them back to their original location. And having said that, I have to also mention that there will be times where cats will come in traps who really shouldn't have been in a trap in the first place and are extraordinarily friendly and I will often skim them and try to get them adopted out so they don't have to go back. Because I think it's essential to release the ones that are unsocializable, but I don't feel it's right to put a completely healthy cat who wants a home and is going to jump up and headbutt me, back out to live in a feral population. So, that's another thing that we try to do. We try to really evaluate them and try to work with the ones that we think we can rehabilitate and oftentimes, it takes only a day or two. So, so actually, the population may decrease just because we're going to have first dibs on which cats we can adopt out. And especially kittens, we're going to want to place them and anyone that we can turn around, we're going to do so so that they don't have to go back and live at the marina or live, you know, behind a store in the dumpster. That's just not a life for someone. So, hopefully, that won't impact the population of new cats that come in, but we'll be there right behind them to trap those too. So, yeah. And I want to make sure you understand, I'm not here to, to try to drive business to Nine Lives. I'm, it's really to offer the resources. This is, spay neutering for any rescue shelter is a losing financial proposition. We lose about $100 on every cat that we fix because the fees we charge are so low, they don't even pay for the supplies. But the impact it has on the community is where we win. And so, the Humane Society would also be a resource. We can post all of the, the Peninsula Humane Society will want to post for the residents. If you don't want to go to Nine Lives, PHS is available, San Francisco, SPCA. We want to make sure that we're not, you know, trying to monopolize, but the difference with Nine Lives is that we allow the residents or trappers to come anytime between 7:30 and 5:30 and drop off a cat in a trap. And that's basically unheard of in the rescue community. And we will not ignore other illnesses or injuries because it's a feral cat. Most places, they spay and neuter and that's it. The cat has a broken leg, it's ignored, it's put back out or it, you know, it's very sickly, it's put back out. So, we're going to make sure the population that's returned is healthy, can survive on its own and if it's very friendly, we're going to take it out of the mix and get, find it a home because that's what Nine Lives, you know, our rescue shelter, so that's what we're going to do.
Where is the foundation located?
It's in Redwood City. We are between Woodside Road and Marsh Road. So, we're, I think about 18 miles from here. And we operate seven days a week, but the surgery center is open Monday through Friday. But, you know, with pregnant cats on the marina, if you called me on Sunday afternoon and said I caught a pregnant cat on the marina, I will be there to take it. So, I went off topic, but anyway, that's the answer. One day, hopefully for recovery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we've gone to the consent calendar.
I'd like to remove I, M, A and C.
A and C.
I, M, A on the last page, page.
Do you want to make a motion to?
Oh, okay. Motion to approve I, M, B.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I, M, A, I, M, A, last page, page five, middle where it says, "A Letter From Mayor Bloomberg Regarding Illegal Guns." And I thought that we had all supported that through a motion, even though we had some dialogue and at first I said I wasn't interested, but it makes look, you know, but the key word on that was illegal. So, I recall we all supported it.
Yep, I recall that too.
Yeah, and I'd like to make that change. The full council supported it.
Yep.
Okay. Got that, Terry? Okay.
And there's no other changes, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You did that. Okay, so, C.
Item C, very good. I think that captured what we wanted to say. I actually had a conversation with Supervisor Horstley on Thursday night at C.C.A.G. And alerted to him, alerted that a letter would be coming forth. And he goes, "Oh, it's not bad, is it?" I go, "No, this is a good thing." Just kind of letting him know. Let him know it's a, it's a good, it's a good letter. It's just, you know, suggestive letter and a follow-up. So, interestingly enough, I'll report to you, but afterwards, part of that meeting, we had a presentation by Mid Peninsula Housing and it really kind of fit right into this. So, it was very good.
Very dovetail, huh?
Yeah, very dovetail. Anyway, I like the letter as it is. I think that captured everything we discussed about last time. And I just wanted to pull it to give you that little short update.
And Mr. Valdez has already noted it too.
Yeah. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? All right, we did it. Okay. So, that moves us on to full business.
And that has to do with the hotel feasibility study at Sierra Point.
And who's going to take that? Okay, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is back before you. Hopefully, with the amendments to the contract that clarify the public nature of the proposed study, the study will be presented to the city council at future meeting. The report will be available to the general public. And so, we made some changes in the contract to make that abundantly clear. I bolded those just for the purposes of making it clear. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
I guess the question is Ray and Terry, if you're happy with it?
I'm still a little confused. Because in one portion of the report or the contract, it's saying that it is a study to determine if a hotel is feasible. And then, and that is what the, Mr. Swig stated when he was here, that he wouldn't advise that a hotel's a good idea unless he felt it was a good idea. And then, in this proposal, it also goes on to say what his recommendations for the proposed hotel are, as if it's already a done deal, that a hotel project is a good project. So, I would like it.
Where are you?
Where, where am I?
Yeah, what language?
Where are you talking, what page?
Well, part of the language was what he gave in his presentation.
I think we all remember.
And then the facilities recommendation on page three of the proposal. And I just, is where he's, future demand for the proposed hotel and recommendations for Brisbane on what the hotel should look like. But it's, it's not saying, you know, if a hotel is, is recommended. Just that he's going to be basically giving his recommendations on what hotel would fit in our spot, not if a hotel is going to fit in our spot. And since he is a hotel person, for the most part, I'm just not, I'm not sure that it's really saying what he said in his, in his proposal. And then-
Mayor, can I respond to that?
Sure.
I don't think those are necessarily mutually exclusive. I could very well see him coming back with a recommendation that says, "At this site, at this time, given the level of development that currently exists out there, it's not feasible to build a hotel. But in the future, at, when certain developments take place out here, you might want to look at, you know, let's say, 200 rooms, two different hotels, a convention, some sort of convention meeting rooms, something of that nature." So, I don't, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think they're necessarily mutually exclusive. Because one of the things that he, I think he talked about last week and certainly did at the subcommittee, was that one of the things that he does is go out and looks at the site and then basically looks out from the site and sees what sort of other development is in that area. And, and if there's a lot of, and we talked last time about a lot of, if there's a lot of corporate headquarters that bring people in, that's one thing. If there's not, that's an entirely different thing. And as we know with Sierra Point, one of the, one of the issues that we're facing is that there is a lot of development that will happen at some point in the future, but it hasn't happened right now. So, very well may come back that, you know, yeah, a hotel will work there at some point in the future. Here's what I think it might look like, but you're not ready to do it because the other development hasn't taken place yet. So, that's where I don't think it's mutually exclusive. I think we've made here both, both things from him.
And I know it is the intent that UPC is paying for this report and Brisbane is the intermediary?
Well, we, we will pay for it. And UPC and our reimbursement agreement will pay the city the cost of what that report is. It'll just go into the monthly billing that Stewart's operation does.
So, we would be reimbursed for it and is, in that respect, be part ownership in the report?
Yeah, I mean, the contract is between Mr. Swig's company and the city of Brisbane.
And this contract in the fees and study timetable? It is $25,000 plus up to $1,000 additional for expenses? Or is that excluding ground transportation, overnight accommodations, board, telecommunications? And it says the Smith Travel Research of $1,000, but I'm not sure that that is inclusive of the other items?
I think that might be boilerplate language that he puts in all of his stuff. But, you know, as he indicated in, to the subcommittee, that he's not really going to be traveling anywhere other than from San Francisco. He's not going to be going.
Right.
Yeah.
So, it is a $25,000 contract or it is a different amount?
No, it's $25,000 and the additional $1,000 is that Smith Travel Research data, which is an industry, some sort of industry standard.
So, so it would be a maximum of $1,000 additional?
For that particular item, yeah.
But not that group of items?
Correct. I mean, if there were overnight, as, and as, I would agree with Councilman Conway's assessment of that. But if there were overnight accommodations or he had to bring in some other analysts to take a look at something, then that would be above the $25,000.
Okay. And the recommendation on, this is a person that was recommended by UPC to complete this study? Is that correct?
Well, I didn't, I didn't catch that.
Who recommended this particular person? Was it UPC was the question? Talking about Swig. So, that's really to the committee, I guess?
Oh, I actually met with Rick Swig a few months ago, back, I think, in November or December. And talked, I found out he was supposed to be the, the guy, the hotel guy. And so, invited him to do a presentation to the subcommittee because we've talked about where we can get the most bang for the buck or what we could do for the immediate future for the city of Brisbane. And so, we're looking at things like Sierra Point, you know, all the stuff that would be in our, our report. And so, from a hotel perspective, we wanted to know how that was going to work out.
Okay, so, it was through your research that we came with this?
Basically, yeah.
This particular person and he meets the approval of UPC to do this joint study?
Well, I don't, we need their reimbursement.
Right.
Approval of wanting to reimburse it, yeah.
They've agreed to reimburse us for this study.
Okay.
And it just, it might be of some interest to the council or some members of the community. There's actually a story in today's San Mateo County Times about the hotel project in San Bruno. And Rick Swig is actually quoted in the article. He's not working on the project, but he's quoted in the article and had some rather interesting things to say about the project and some of the issues with the city of San Bruno. So, this might be an interesting read.
Well, I had asked when he, he did his presentation for a sample report and, you know, he had said he would do a redacted copy. So, he wasn't giving away any secrets. And what I really got was a boilerplate Hotel Feasibility Study 101, which I was quite disappointed with. It wasn't what I was really asking for and maybe I wasn't clear on that point. But that's the only questions I have.
What do you think, Ray?
Yeah, well, I think the major concern that I expressed last time was that the city was paying for it and they'll be producing a report. But then the agreement said that it would be a secret report. And I said, "Oh, wait a minute, that can't be." At least that's how I read it. And so, therefore, I wanted to make clear that the result is something that's going to be presented publicly and the report will be a public document. And I think the language changes reflect that concern. So, I'm comfortable with that change. And it's my understanding that this is really something that was, you know, generated by the Economic Development Subcommittee. And on the basis of that, as long as it's clear that, you know, it's a public document when we get to the end, I'm happy.
Yeah, yeah, I would expect it to be a part of our agenda and which is open to the public. And anyone can read it and make comments to us or to staff.
Okay.
I guess if we're comfortable with that, then I'd like to make a motion for, to authorize the city manager to sign the revised proposal with R.S.B. Associates, R.S.B.A. and Associates to conduct the hotel feasibility study.
And I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close? Okay. Okay, the next item is Brisbane History, the second 25 years. And I see Maria's coming up to the podium, so I assume you're on.
I believe I am. Hey, evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I am pleased to provide you with the final draft copy of the 50th anniversary book that we've been working on over the past couple of years. As you will recall, in 2010, the council gave direction to go ahead and form a history subcommittee so that we could start preparing for collecting history information and to celebrate the 50th anniversary, which was coming up in 2011. Through that process, the committee went through an RFP process to select a historian, which in that we selected History Associates and Corporate. As you know, we also selected Adrian Kinane, who was the historian from History Associates, who over 2011, 2012, worked with the subcommittee to make sure that we collected a list of topics as well as identified candidates for interviews to collect the history of the city. With the subcommittee's approval, Mr. Kinane interviewed approximately 50 community members as well as staff members to cover approximately 85 various topics. And he also researched information within the city archives, collection and records. He then proceeded to go ahead and write our history for us. As you know, we went ahead and as he prepared chapter by chapter, he sent copies of the chapters over to the subcommittee for our review and we would send them edits as, as this process went along. So, at this point, we have completed the review of the seven chapters for our upcoming history book. We're, we're now providing it to the full council to take a final review for final edits. Once we have approval by the whole council to move forward with the history book, we will be ready to move into the design and publication phase. I do need to clarify some information regarding the proposal for the design and publication. This morning, I received updated information regarding the cost of the, of the design and publishing. The prices have gone up unfortunately due to increases in the cost of paper as well as the cost of postage for delivery of the, of the books. So, what we're looking at now, I apologize for not having correct information within my staff report. But what we're looking at now is if we want 1,000 copies of, of the books that have black text within it, it would cost approximately $32,000. Again, as I noted in the staff report, we do have 5,000 that was already previously budgeted. So, we'd need about $27,000 additional to be allocated to move forward with it. If we decide to go with 2,000 black text copies, the cost would actually be a little over $38,000 and we'd need an additional little over $33,000 to move forward with that. The third option is if we decide to go with 1,000 color text copies, where we would have colored, different colored text within the book as well as colored photos. That cost would be about $38,300 and we'd need additional $33,300 for that. And the fourth option is 2,000 color text copies, which would be $44,600 and we'd need almost $40,000 in addition to that. The only fluctuation that they noted in the cost could be, as well as possible fluctuations in the paper costs, is that in the design costs, if the amount they quoted gives us about 60 hours of design time, should that, should we need additional design time, they would bill us at about $110 per hour for that. They think that 60 hours would be adequate for this type of project as long as they receive clear direction if there are minimal changes and we provide direct feedback. However, they do want to note that there is that possibility as this does happen in most publication processes. So, with that, staff is requesting a direction from the council on how to proceed. We would like to make sure that you have plenty of time to review the draft. So, we'd also like to check with you in terms of how much time you think you would need to review the book. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, I'd love to get some feedback from the subcommittee.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm a little confused on the, on the figures that you gave. So, I guess we need to work through this again. Because, you know, I'm looking at the original memo from December 12th and the figures you're quoting are much higher. So, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, is things, things really going up that much in a couple of months? So, there's kind of a disconnect for me. I'm trying to figure all this out.
Right, and maybe, I'm not sure if I can either provide a way to show you the summary that I made to show you the differences in costs from the original. Again, the, in the staff report itself, I did make a mistake in terms of referring to 1,000 color copies. It's supposed to be 2,000 black text copies in that. So, the pricing was different in that area.
I don't think that's, that's a reflection of our decision-making either. So, I'm really quite, I'm a little confused here because, first of all, and I'll check with my colleague here. You know, we had this long discussion about, you know, black versus color. And I think, and we clearly came to the decision that, you know, the incremental cost for color wasn't that much.
And that was color photos.
Yes, color photos, yeah.
Color photos.
Not text, but color photos.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, and, and you see all the images that you see in there are in color, whereas the previous book was all black and white. Uh, but the technology has changed so dramatically that the difference between black and white and color is not that great anymore. And so, that's why we thought that, you know, it would make sense to go for color.
Color photos and we'd do two thousand copies.
And, right, and then we also looked at, um, the incremental cost of going to higher, uh, numbers of copies. And I think, uh, I think it was Clark who said, "Well, you know, there isn't that much more between a thousand and two thousand 'cause really, basically, cost is the, is the layout and design and all that. And then printing more, it doesn't cost that much more incrementally or marginally." Uh, so, you know, we have made that decision, uh, at that meeting. And, um, the, you know, the, the material that I have says that the, you know, the publication cost for two thousand was twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and so, the figure you're giving, I don't know whether it includes a lot of other things besides that or the cost has gone up, you know, significantly. It's, it's just confusing to me as to where your figures are, are, are coming from in reference to what I'm looking at in terms of the material that we had before us at the last subcommittee meeting. So, I'm, I'm just a little confused and I would, you know, appreciate some clarification on those issues. Does that make sense, Clark, do you remember the same?
Yeah.
Well, in terms of the difference in cost, um, between the, um, during the December two thousand and twelve proposals, there was, between the one thousand, two thousand copies, there was about a four thousand dollar difference.
Right.
In terms of the design costs, there was about a one thousand, five hundred dollar dis- difference.
Right.
And the postage cost, that's where we see quite a bit in, I think, from the one thousand to two thousand copies. A little under, about twelve, um, fourteen hundred in shipping cost difference.
And we talked about, um, getting it registered with the Library of Congress or-
Right.
Putting out the ISBN number.
But that's in there, yeah, right.
One of the things I, um, I apologize, I don't recall whether we approved, um, putting in the index, which was fifteen hundred dollars, as well as, um, well, the ISBN number is minimal at a hundred twenty-five. The difference now with the new proposals is that the design cost is basically the same, um, at six hun- six thousand, six hundred dollars for either the black and white or the color in terms of the design. There was a significant increase in the, um, proofing, which went up by about five hundred and ten dollars as well as the admin labor, which went up about five hundred dollars. And then in terms of the, um, the cost difference between the black text, um, for both the one thousand, two thousand copies, it looks like there's a difference ranging from a thousand to twelve, twelve hundred dollars. Within the colored text, um, actually same, about a thousand to twelve hundred dollars.
We talked more about colored pictures versus text.
Um, so I have a, a quick question. When you talk about, um, black and, black text or colored text, are we still talking about color photos and then just the color of text? Or all black and white printing?
I thought we talked about black and white text, black text-
Right.
And color photos.
Right.
Yeah, you, you wouldn't wanna do it any other way.
Right.
I can't imagine we would.
That's what we talked about.
Actually, the previous, um, edition wasn't just black and white.
Just in black and white, but in those days, you know, that was a long time ago. Uh, and the difference between doing it in black and white and in color with available technology in those days was, you know, double, but now we're only talking about, you know, fifteen, twenty percent, you know, differential. So, you can really get the wonderful product for not that much more in contrast to what it used to be.
I have a question. If we, if we purchase two thousand of these books, how do we expect to distribute them? Are we giving them away? Are we, uh, is it every resident or by request or what is our, what are we planning to do with these? And maybe this is to the council, not to staff.
We, we have had some previous discussion of either finding an event to distribute it and not actually either offering it at a reduced cost so we can try and recover part of it. However, it was still in the early stages when we discussed it at the council, at the subcommittee level. So, there was discussion about possibly selling it for a ten dollars or twenty dollars initially. Let me see where we go from there.
And, um, and then also a question. We've, we've contracted with his historian from, um, History Associates as the person to produce the book. Is that also who is doing the printing or is that sub, subcontracting the printing to a different printer?
Currently, the quote is through History Associates who do the printing.
Okay, and is that something we are locked into with them that they do the printing?
Not at this time.
No.
We have not approved.
So, if there's such a large difference in original quotes and quotes now, perhaps we should look at-
It's not clear to me because you're, when you break it down, it doesn't sound that much different. So, but then the, the total figures you're given are seemingly a lot bigger. So, I guess what I'd like to, would need to see is the, you know, the finer breakdown.
I do have a one copy of it, if you like, I can run and make copies or have-
We have copies or can we show, when I take it, I'll get the projector. Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be helpful to, because we did have the whole breakdown, you know, when we did our initial decision.
Well, printing can be amazingly different from printer to printer.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and while cheap isn't always the best, it can, you know, if we're printing it locally, we could save a lot on shipping. If we're printing it far away, we could save a lot on the printing. It really depends.
Right.
Well, we did that on a native plant, uh,
Right.
manual, and, uh, we did that back-
Well, we worked with, uh, Eleanor Cork, who has a printer in Taiwan, and we saved a lot. Even though it was shipped all the way across the-
Right, right, I mean, but printing and, and quotes for printing are just astronomically-
Right.
Different depending on-
Right.
Where you get it from.
Yes, also-
Do you do a magic hand presentation?
The mongoose crossing the screen.
So, I tried to combine the two, um, quotes that we see together on here. As you see over here, these are original numbers that we received in December and then the numbers that we see, um, earlier today. In terms of the quantity, they are listed here in terms of what was quoted in December and what was quoted in April. I, oh, what I did was combine them.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
It is.
Yeah, thank you.
That was Alice in Wonderland.
Okay, so the highlighted sections here are what, the original quote that we were taking a look at. And I apologize if I got the wrong, um, information on there. It was for two thousand black text copies, which was approximately a thirty-two and it was about, um, this is the five thousand that we currently have budgeted within, um, our current proposal.
So, that's five thousand dollars less than what the actual cost is?
Well, we have five thousand that was originally budgeted, um, in the, um, research phase as going towards design. So, that five thousand can apply in our current, um, budget for the history book towards the, towards the, um, design and publishing cost at this time.
Right, but, but, but if we're looking at the total cost, the five thousand dollar credit is, is just what we've already budgeted for, um, not- and, yeah.
It wasn't spent.
It was-
Yeah.
Hasn't been spent yet.
Correct.
But the total cost is your first column.
Right, so this is what we have in the December and in the April proposal at this time.
And again, the colored text means color printing.
Right.
Which we wouldn't want to do, um, not color fixtures.
It's gone up about twenty percent, man.
Well, not that much, but it's gone up. The, the key figure is, um, as we were always talking about, uh-
All over ten.
The text is, I think that's, uh, their professional lingo, which gets us confused. But I think essentially, black is everything in black and white and color is the pictures in color. I think that's really what-
Yeah, even if the text is black.
Yeah, exactly, right. And so, the real bottom line difference, uh, 'cause we're really looking, at least what, what we're thinking about was the two thousand color, um, which is now almost forty thousand dollars. And originally, in December, was thirty-three thousand three hundred, so we're looking at about six thousand dollars difference.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's forty-four thousand dollars.
No, 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 you gotta take the five thousand credit out.
Well-
That's already budgeted.
Budgeted, but it's still the cost of the product.
Bottom line.
Well, the five thousand is for the, the graphic and design layout, not for the, not for the, uh, printing.
Yeah, but it's a whole ball of wax now.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Right, this is the-
But the, with the five thousand, one hundred, whatever it is, uh, five thousand sixteen, uh, was, was, was a part of the original proposal. Uh, and that's already been, you know, budgeted. Uh, so, what we're talking about, uh, in terms of, uh, increase from the budget or that we, we'd be seeking an additional appropriation, uh, that's the figure in the far right column.
So, with-
If we accept their proposal for doing the printing.
Right, and, and the five thousand dollars that's the balance, we've already spent how much on these?
How much have we spent, you know, on the total project?
So far, yeah. What have we budgeted originally?
Fifty, fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand, I think, yeah.
So, I think forty-five.
Is that right?
Expensive little remembrance.
It was a lot of research put into-
Well, yeah, he interviewed, uh, lots of people and transcribed and didn't have to write it all up and multiple changes with all us editing and so-
Right, the total budget that, um, previously was forty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-six. So, we spent everything except for the five thousand sixteen.
Right.
I'm sorry, forty-seven thousand?
Five ninety-six?
Six hundred.
So, forty-eight thousand.
And then we're looking at maybe adding another forty, thirty-nine thousand.
Right. If we go with this proposal, that's what, that's their, their figures.
So, eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Now, I think it makes a lot of sense for them to do the proofing. Do all the, you know, the, the design and graphic layout and so forth. Um, but whether they actually do the printing or arrange for the printing, I don't actually think, they're not a printing company. So, they would arrange for the printing. But it is the case, and the reason the shipping is high is that I presume that their, uh, printing, the choice of printer would be close to where they're headquartered, which happens to be in Maryland.
In, in Scotia, yeah, I, I've heard of that, so-
So, that may be part of the shipping issue there.
But is this a full-size book, a mini-book, um?
It's a full-size book, like this.
It's gonna be that large?
Proportionately the same as the first one.
So, to give you an edit, this one is about a hundred and fifty-four pages. Um, the one that was proposed is about two hundred and forty pages.
Same size.
Phone book size.
Mm-hmm.
Small phone book.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I personally would like to get a better quote on printing, um, or at least a competitive quote on printing before budgeting.
So, so just trying to understand this, this quote. So, all the research we've already paid for.
Yes.
So-
In writing.
What we have right here is what we paid for.
Right.
Basically.
Right, right.
Now, do I wanna take this information and take it to the printer and, and make the real deal?
Right, but due to layout, yeah.
Right, and then here are these different options. The most expensive one would be the two thousand copies-
Mm-hmm.
With colored pictures.
Right.
Forty-four thousand, but minus the five thousand that we still haven't spent yet.
Right.
Brings us to thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Right.
Part of this money, you know, goes towards the page proofing, some admin labor, um-
Right.
Additional design. And then, and then the color part, what, what's that, Maria?
Um, well, the original quote actually had a difference in design cost between whether we were going with just a black and white or a color. Um, they made it into one, um, the same price at this point in the new proposal.
Okay. So, I mean, it seems like we're committed then, with them to, to do the, the, still the, the design elements of, of, of the book.
Mm-hmm.
And they, they've done the majority of it.
Oh, yeah.
It makes sense just to stick with them. Is there a possibility that they could give us a finished product and we could then, um, source who would, who would make the book and print it? I mean, there are some local, I mean, there, there's a lot of folks around who could, who could do it, um.
I see why not, um, I, yeah, and I don't think they're planning on, you know, I mean, the, printing is not their business. The, you know, writing books is their business. I mean, they're, that they're oral history, uh, company.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but, you know, I mean, I, you know, being added-
So, the way they're offering this as, uh, you know, to facilitate things, but if we wanted to-
Yes.
To look at options, uh, actually, I don't even think-
Let's just pose the question and, uh, and find out that we want, okay, we wanna print-ready.
Right.
And see if we can get a better quote for the printing. And that, you know, they understand that.
Sure, or we might wanna do a little investigation first to see whether they can come up with something that's, you know, significantly cheaper and then ask them whether they, uh, rather than, you know, take them off right away.
Yeah. You know, Terry-
Chop it around a little.
Yeah, you know-
Chop around a little, yeah, right.
Terry also brought up a good point where, I mean, yeah, two thousand copies, that, yeah, you, you, you get a much better deal per copy as opposed to one thousand. But of course, if you don't need the whole two thousand, then you are just spending extra money. And so, um, I, you know, it'd be nice to, to kinda be able to get a feel for, you know, what the market is out there for these books. I mean, I, of course, if we gave them to everybody, they'd say, "Yeah, I'll take one." You know, everyone's gonna accept something for free. Uh, but we wanna make sure that, you know, the people that get these books, you know, really want them and that they're going to read them. I mean, that's, we're doing this because we wanna provide this to the community and we think that the community wants this.
And will enjoy it.
Yeah, I mean-
I mean, and it's, it's, per, per book, it's, I mean, when we get, when we get the phone book delivered and we all know that half of them either stay on the sidewalk until they go in the recycle bin, um, and, and they end up there. They aren't wanted and they end up not being appreciated for the work and the cost that goes into producing it. And so, I would want the community to know that this is something that we've worked hard at and that it, so that it's appreciated. I mean, it's an expensive book, however we end up producing it, it's expensive-
It's not something that you pass out like, like a phone book, I mean-
Right, right, I, I couldn't-
Anniversaryies and stuff like that, I mean, you have special events where you package these and, uh, like the first anniversary book that, that, that we do, the Born of Fire book and also the, uh, Inception of Brisbane, I think, from nineteen thirties to, you know, or nineteen twenties to, uh, until incorporation. So, you know, there's a whole slew of them there and I think it's something that, uh, a lot of people would really be interested in, especially people that moved to Brisbane on, you know, what's, what's going on or they wanna move here and we have this available.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, and, you know, it's, uh, not really a thing that we, I mean, we discussed it, you know, and should we try and recover our cost or, you know, or what would we charge for something like this? And Ray and I knocked it around, you know, from ten dollars to maybe twenty bucks or, you know, or give it, you know, as a reduced cost or, you know, you give X number of copies out for free, you know, because, uh, you know, when you have special events, you don't wanna say, "Oh, ten bucks for the pen." You, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, I mean-
Celebration party or some-
But this is some- But this is something that, I mean, it's, money, money's already been spent and I'm not saying it's not for a good cause. But it's an expensive book to produce. It's gonna, at these kind of prices, it's about over forty dollars a book is what it costs to the city. And so, you know, how we distribute it or how we promote it, that is, it is an expensive book, it's not.
Right, and you drop that cost by making more.
Well, that's at two thousand.
Yeah.
You know, if we do a thousand, it's, oh, it's probably over fifty dollars a book.
I mean, we got about two thousand tax parcels here in Brisbane, I mean, it's, you know, and this is gonna be for years. Like, the first one that was printed.
Right, right, well, we won't have another.
Okay, we got two thousand copies, here's your copy, here's yours, you know what I mean? Is, you wanna keep an ample supply because, you know, even when we're gone, you hope that this history book is still there.
Well, no, I understand.
Research thing, you know, and what, uh.
We're still handing out the first one.
And, you know, and.
It's about forever.
And how many copies did you get of that?
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
It was before I got here and I was just wondering the same thing.
But I'm sure the population was probably a lot less, too. So you're thinking of a lower number. But, you know, like, the thing, the thing about, you talk about the phone book. Back in the day, you went to the phone book to find things, you don't use the phone book anymore.
No, 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 I understand that.
You're going on the internet and you're doing your thing. And, but, you know, it's still nice to be able to look at a book and look at the pictures and take your time with it as opposed to looking.
Well, I think for history and this kind of thing, it is nice to have it in a book, not just in an electronic format.
Yes, but we know a lot of people, you know, they don't use books as much as they used to.
Sure, but I think particularly since there was a lot of participation within the community to create the history, I think there would be quite a bit of interest of their own to have a copy of this within their home to show that they were part of creating it.
Well, and I would think that if we're able to also create a digital copy of the book, some people may prefer a digital copy of the book. And so if we can get it in a DVD format or whatever they, whatever they call that.
We have it on our website.
Well, we'll own the copyright.
And so that way we can also, you know, it can go into people's personal archives of the book and probably be a much less expensive way to distribute for those who want. The less tactile version.
For sure. Well, you know, maybe, you know, we do some outreach, just to, you know, just to get kind of a feel where the numbers lie. Maybe two thousand is the right number and then, you know, and go with that. But I, you know, I do think that we should investigate printing it locally, you know, getting that end price from them of what it would take to get it print-ready and then see what we can come up with.
So perhaps what I can do is go ahead and see if I can get a request for quotes on publishing it locally and then from there, if the prices are much better, then maybe we can move ahead with either going with the thousand or two thousand. We don't have to necessarily do the outreach to find out for sure, because that might raise a certain anticipation if we don't have it in those periods.
Okay, no, that makes sense. You know, one of the things that you could also do, and I think you were talking about it, Ray, was gather your print research and then go back to these guys and say, okay, well, if we do it locally, this is what it's gonna cost. If you wanna do that part of the job, just match this and then they continue to do everything else. Because, you know, you also have to include the shipping, too. I mean, if you did it locally, we could send a van, you know, two thousand books, there's only gonna be so many boxes. There's not that much of, uh.
It's a lot of weight.
It's a lot of weight, but it's not.
But they're square.
You know, I throw a lot of programs out of candlestick. Yeah, so it doesn't take that many boxes.
Give us your call.
Yeah, I would just like to have the, a little bit of research on the printing costs because, you know, these people are charging a markup, you know, for handling the print.
For sure.
Probably, yeah.
Oh, well, you don't do something to not make some money on it. Or they wouldn't, yeah.
Right, so I guess it's back to you guys, huh?
Yeah, well, I think that, um, do we, the numbers may not be totally clear, but are you comfortable with our suggestion that it be color rather than all black and white? Is that okay with you?
I think that's a good idea, I just would like to see if we can get the production cost down.
So then we can sort of look into other options for printing cost?
And not necessarily just local. I mean, it would be nice if it was local, but I think overall cost is something we should look at. But as in always, I would rather pay a little bit more to do it locally and support our local businesses.
That's what I was gonna suggest, you know, I mean, 'cause you can ship it overseas, but, you know, that's the antithesis of American business.
Yeah, well, okay, so we can look at the options and then, you know, the way it's laid out here, it makes it easier to understand well all the components are and, you know, that would be helpful. And then I think we didn't really expect our colleagues to read two hundred and fifty pages over the weekend and edit it and so forth.
Thank you.
The point was to bring it, you know, to your attention and of course, now that it's been distributed, it is a public document and if somebody wants to come look at it and see whether they're in it or not, you know, they're welcome to do so. And then we can come back to a subsequent council meeting with, you know, options of printing and also maybe you will have had a chance to read it more carefully and make some suggestions for whatever needs to be edited or changed if you think that's the case.
Thank you.
Ray Clark?
Yep.
Okay.
Good luck, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Maria. Okay, the next under new business is the sustainability goals for the Baylands. And Stuart, you gonna take the lead on that?
Sure.
All right, go for it.
Although I can say you probably can do it better than I can. This has been a project that's been going on since about January of two thousand and nine. The city council has created a five-person sustainability subcommittee, or committee. It has two council members, council members Miller and council member Lentz, and it has members from each of the Planning Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Open Space and Ecology Committee. They reviewed a series of different metrics for determining sustainability and the committee determined that One Planet Living Bio-Regional had the most advanced. One at the time had the most information available and was able to be verified by a third party when all was said and done. So the Bio-Regional or the One Planet Living has ten different principles. I've listed those principles out in the staff report. They are zero carbon building, zero waste, sustainable transportation, local and sustainable materials, local and sustainable food, sustainable water, open space and habitat, culture and heritage, economic vitality with equity and ecology, and then health, safety, and happiness. The report that you have before you is still in progress. This is the first section of that report, ultimately done. The section that you have has the Common International Targets, the context and the summary. The Common International Target is pretty much what it says, what as an internet, how do we create a planet where people only use one planet's worth of resources per person? So for instance, right now, the average American uses five planets' worth of resources for each person in the United States. That would be something that is not sustainable if everybody on Earth was doing that. We need to get down to the point where we are using one or less planet's worth of resources per person. So the Common International Targets talk to that idea as an international target. The context is more of what's going on in the area locally for you. So as you read through it, you'll notice there's a lot of information about the Baylands, about Brisbane, about what's going on in San Francisco and the Bay Area, and each of those different values and policy areas. And then the summary approach is how this project is going to meet the One Planet Living goals. It doesn't talk about how it's going to be measured yet, it doesn't talk about any action plan. Those are things that will happen after everybody is in agreement with what has been written to date. That once people are comfortable with the summary approach of how we are planning to meet those values and those targets, then the committee is going to get back together and start developing measurable goals and then develop how those goals will actually be measured and then an action plan on how to get to those goals. So there's still plenty of work to be done in completing this. Along with the different values, I wrote what the idea, the overriding idea that the committee came up with for each of those values, what the ultimate value meant to the committee and what we believe it means to the community as a whole as it relates to the Baylands. The big question that is always that, so this was developed and this was done last April. You sent it out to the different committees and commissions. So the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Planning Commission, and the Open Space and Ecology Committee has reviewed this document and they have made their suggestions. Those suggestions were brought back to the city council and the council asked the committee to go back and incorporate as many of those suggestions as made the best, would make this document stronger. And the committee spent a number of months working through all the suggestions that were made by the individual committees as well as any suggestions that we received from individual members of the public. They had incorporated those that made the document stronger, had conversations about, you know, what did the comments mean? And they did a very good job in incorporating all those to bring to you the document tonight. The document will ultimately, I think, be used as part of potentially looking at some methods for meeting the EIR requirements. But a lot of this document goes beyond just trying to have negligent impact or to reduce significant impact. It's really trying to make the project more sustainable than I think what Sequo would require a project to be. So the conversation has been that a lot of what you're maybe seeing here in the summary approach would be being implemented through development agreements with the developer as well as working with the actual, the individual businesses and people who use that, who use the Baylands. This is where having something like Bio-Regional be the third-party verifier would be very useful. Bio-Regional, if they sign on to this as a Bio-Regional and One Planet project, would be requiring the owners of the property and the users of the property to be submitting reports as to how they're meeting whatever the measures and targets and the action plan is. And then they would verify that those are being done. So I think that was another one of the reasons why the Sustainability Committee looked at trying to tag on to something that already had some international meat behind it. This was, Bio-Regional gave a presentation years ago at the University of Brisbane, the Bedzad Project in the UK is a One Planet Living project. That was something that was presented a number of years ago. Council members Miller and Lentz went up to Sonoma Mountain Village, which is another Bio-Regional and One Planet Living project. So this is not something that doesn't have projects already completed. I think the Baylands, though, would be at the moment a unique project for Bio-Regional. Most of Bio-Regional's projects that they deal with deal with trying to figure out how you make housing sustainable. And I think what we're looking for is how do you make a project that is fairly large and may not have any housing in it? How do you make that sustainable? And I think the Sustainability Committee has come up with a number of good ways of doing that. The Sustainability Committee used a consultant to assist them in developing this document, Jeff Cypher's. Jeff Cypher's has worked with Bio-Regional before, he's worked on the Sonoma Mountain Village project. So his input in how do you, how would we best be able to meet Bio-Regional's requirements was very useful. One of the things that Jeff Cypher's was very surprised at, because we've done something different from most other communities, Jeff Cypher's was wondering why the developer was not at the table and helping to develop the sustainability plan. And what we had told him was that this is a sustainability plan that the community wanted to put together regardless of who the developer would be. And therefore, they wanted to have a sustainability plan that met the requirements of the community. And then as we go through potentially the action planning phase, that may be when we start talking with the developer to figure out how do we implement what the community would like to say. That's my summary report. And as I said, I'm sure council members Miller and Lentz would have more to say than I do.
That was a pretty good summary, Stuart.
You're always so modest.
I'm just curious to get some feedback from Clark and Terry.
Actually, I read this initial, initial report and gave a whole bunch of feedback on some things. So, you know, it's a work, work in progress. I don't have any more feedback to provide other than that, um, the more pointed part about the Baylands specifically when it comes to, you know, the refuge, let's see what chapter that was. Tell you in a second here, right at the beginning.
That would probably be the zero waste chapter two?
Zero waste, yeah, the onsite. And we've talked about this, I guess, probably in the Economic Development Subcommittee, about truckless collection and stuff like that and how that would integrate into the Baylands using modern technology of vacuum, you know, systems that would separate out. So it doesn't really say that specifically in here. I think, you know, that's where an area of focus that, you know, we probably really should look at is the technologies that are available that you wanna look at, you know, and of course, it's, you know, gonna be a moving target 'cause, you know, how long it projects out, technology's gonna change and, but, you know, we should use language that's flexible enough that allows, what would you say?
On page eight, yeah, on page eight, I think the committee was trying to address that issue and it may not have done it in the best way possible, but it says the Baylands Development should look for opportunities to use advanced waste reduction practices from simple ideas like adding food waste collection and local toxic drop-off center to more sophisticated ideas like vacuum tubes to connect buildings directly with a collection facility thereby reducing truck traffic.
Yeah, I thought we had that.
We did.
Okay.
I remember quit writing that after you said that.
Yeah.
I get your language.
No, for sure.
Yeah.
And, you know, as we move on to the key performance indicators, you know, we'll be addressing how you do that, how you monitor that. You know, and that's one of the great things about having Recology, right, it being part of the project is that you can then tap into that expertise, their drive, well, you know, I guess, San Francisco's drive to be zero, to have a zero-waste mandate, and having this company who is at the leading edge of waste management implement that for them. So I think it, you know, provides a potential opportunity for us to be able to tie into that. And the vacuum tube thing, that came up at one of the meetings that we had with Recology and they were talking about how Sweden already implements that. So, I mean, a lot of what's in this document, I would say ninety-eight percent of it already exists today. already exists today.
Somewhere.
Some fashion, or it's, it's in the planning stage to be implemented.
The technology's there. Not in the US. I think the overall goal, though, is to really look at reducing...
You'd be surprised at how much else they're doing in our country these days, yeah.
Reducing the carbon footprint.
Yeah.
And that's really what something like this would do. It'd be kind of really not compared to any, any other place, to be able to have that. Do you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, you know, in doing the research for this thing, I mean, I still haven't found any place that has all the components, all in one project. There is, you know, I mean, this project's big, and it's, it has so much, you know.
Funny.
It's definitely a beast.
Yeah.
But it's got so much opportunity, and because of its location and, you know, where we are in this, in the Bay Area with the technology and, you know, all of the, you know, all the money, too, you know, that would, that would go into financing a project like this. So, yeah, it's just pretty cool. But, yeah, yeah, you know, it is interesting that, you know, what we're proposing is something that has not, you know, you really can't find it anywhere else in the world.
Well, it definitely wasn't a template, and it's very nice.
No, it wasn't a Rick Swig.
Yeah. Now, this document was put together over a long period of time with a lot of meetings and a lot of editing and a lot of back and forth and a lot of discussion. So this is really a unique document. I mean, it's created by the Sustainability Committee and doesn't come off a, as you say, a standard template.
No, it's...
You were working on this two years before you came back on the council.
That's right.
And Open Space and Ecology representatives.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we really took the feedback, too, from our advisory committees. And it was, you know, what's nice about this committee is that you have a representative from each of those advisory groups, you know, making sure that their comments, you know, stay or if they need to be modified, that they're still in the spirit of the information that came from those advisory groups. So I felt like we did a representation of taking that feedback and making the document better.
So really, it's not an action item, it's just whatever feedback that we have, and I provided mine, and I'm sorry, I missed it, but you actually took...
Oh, Cliff.
And inserted it in there.
All we're looking forward to, all that I think the committee's looking forward tonight is to say that this document meets the requirements as it relates to these three topic areas, and therefore, they can then start going forward and developing targets, how you measure those targets, and developing an action plan. And just to let you know, we have talked with Jeff Seifers to help us with the next phase in this. He is willing to, and UPC has agreed to pay for his continued contract with us. So we would use Jeff Seifers, who, as I said, has worked on projects like this, maybe not like this one, but has worked on BioRegional projects before.
Yeah, so I think that we were looking for a sense of, okay, guys, you're doing fine, keep going. That's sort of what we're looking for in terms of moving on to the next phase, which Stuart was just articulating. And if we have that, you know, sense from both of you, then, you know, we're ready to move to the next phase.
And we'll set up the next meeting.
Yeah, right.
Get moving.
Yeah. Now, there's one other area that is not for any decisions tonight, but I wanted to raise it so that, at least in my mind, is kind of part of the conversation as we go forward. And that is, there's been some conversation, and particularly from the draft EIR consultant, about whatever plan we put together needs to respond to the quote "city's objectives", unquote. And I'm presuming that whatever we come up with through the sustainability process will be part of the city's objectives. So the question that I want us to keep thinking about is, okay, at some point, we need to be more explicit about, you know, what are the city's objectives for the Baylands? And that is so we can know how to evaluate the final kind of thing we want to put together. Is it meeting our objectives? And what would be the content of those objectives? And how much of that would be drawn from the sustainability document? I'd just kind of like to bring that issue as something we need to think about. And I know that, you know, we raised it, you know, with the staff, and I know they are sort of puzzling about this and how we put it all together. But it's probably something we need to put on our planning docket as to, you know, when we face this and how we articulate it, because we will need to have that in place when we start, you know, making evaluation of the different planning possibilities. Once we have the, you know, all the material from the draft EIR and the comments and responses, we need to have a sense of, okay, so what do we want out of this? And that's where we have the necessity for our objectives, community, city objectives. So I wanted to raise that issue as a, as a part of this process, because this really, in a way, is kind of the, you know, the beginning of that process, because it's a component there, at least that's how I see it. Do you want, anybody in the staff want to add to that?
Yeah, well, we did have a good conversation about this the other day. And I think one of the pieces of this was that the Open Space Committee had worked on this issue of city objectives some number of years ago and brought forward some ideas to the council, which I believe were adopted by the council.
They were, they were.
Two thousand seven?
Six.
Six, okay. So I think the private question is, at some point, going back and, and looking at what we're doing with the sustainability principles and then the document that we did back in two thousand six when we started the process, and seeing, you know, how those marry up. And then I think probably at some point, and I guess this will, you know, question with the attorneys and with the planning director, is it was somewhere in the process, probably maybe taking a fresh look at our whole objectives. And exactly where, when that should happen, I'm not, you know, totally sure at the moment. But I think that is something that, before you get into really designing whatever plan you're going to have out there, from which all the mitigation measures are going to flow, development agreements are going to flow, and however we implement these sustainability objectives are going to flow. So I think good conversation and a lot of questions, I think, in terms of timing and just how it comes together. But I think you have probably a pretty good handle on kind of the, you know, the magnitude of what we're talking about, just, you know, the fine details of timing and, you know, the strategy of when that happens, I think are things we need to think through.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, no, I'm glad you raised that, that point, right? Because, you know, the objectives that the council had approved, this document should be compatible, you know, with those objectives. And, and of course, you know, things that you aspired to six, seven years ago, you know, they can change, you know, technology changes. And so you raise the bar to, for what you think you can achieve. And so, yeah, I'm excited. I'm excited about getting that draft EIR out and trying to understand what are the environmental issues that plague the site and what can we do to mitigate them? Those things that come out from the draft EIR, do they have an influence on this document? I would think that they would. And so, but it's a long haul, for sure. And I think we're all in it for that long haul as well. Thank you for, yeah.
Good job.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next and the last item in new business is proposals for rules and procedures for city commissions and committees. And I think the city attorney's going to take the lead on that one, right?
I will.
All right.
As you may recall, some time ago, a council subcommittee was formed to look at the rules and procedures governing the city's commissions and committees. We have a planning commission with an adopted set of bylaws. There's a Parks and Rec Commission, which has some procedural rules actually adopted by ordinance. Open Space and Ecology, I think they had their own set of procedures as well. And there was some concern as to whether these various rules, first of all, were inconsistent with each other, and secondly, covered all of the topics that we wanted covered, and particularly some areas where, you know, the council had some direct supervisory authority over the operation of commissions and committees. So working with the subcommittee, staff developed a set of proposed rules and procedures which would be adopted by ordinance, and that is the attachment to the proposed Resolution 2013-12. And by and large, we found there were not a huge amount of inconsistencies, but there were a lot of subjects that simply were not covered. And one of the areas where there was not totally consistent was the position of the chair. So, for example, in the Parks and Rec Commission, there was a specific provision dealing with the fact that the chair need not rotate. There was some discussion over whether we should have a rule that requires rotation. I think it was felt that probably was not necessary at this point and perhaps going a little too far, but at least not encouraging a person to continue as chair by having a specific provision saying that a person may occupy that position more than one term. So that also is part of the package tonight, is an amendment to the Parks and Recreation ordinance that specifically provided for a person occupying the position of chair to succeed himself and occupy that for another term. We're not prohibiting it, we're simply deleting that one sentence from that part of the MUNI code. So what the proposed rules say is that the position of chair is determined by a majority vote, which is what I think all the commissions and committees are doing. And the term should normally be, should be for one year and should normally be rotated to another member of the board of commission or committee. So it's not a mandate that it be rotated, but it expresses kind of a policy preference on the part of the council that you would like to see that position normally rotated. On the conduct of meetings, there's simply some general language dealing with, you know, the ability to establish time limits, that once the hearings are closed, then it's the turn of the commission or the committee to conduct their own deliberations without necessarily being interrupted by members of the public. And then there's some list of responsibilities of the chair in terms of the conduct of the meeting, moving it along, and trying to bring the group toward a decision in the most expeditious way possible. The issue of communications has come up a little bit in the past, namely at the council level, when we are dealing with written communications and what the council response to that would be. Basically, what this is saying is that if you receive written communications, preferably it should be delivered before the meeting, so it can be included as part of the packet. If it comes in later, then it should be available for distribution to the public at the meeting, or at least announced to the public that it has been received. We have a rule expressly discouraging the receipt or the sending of text messages by members of a commission or committee during a meeting, particularly during a time when that item is being discussed. Now, I know you all receive emails, and there's nothing wrong with that, but I think anyone sending an email has to recognize that it's part, not part of the administrative record. You can always take a printed copy of that email and submit it to the city clerk to be included in the record, or announced during the meeting that, you know, you received communications from various people. But the best way, if someone wants to make sure their views are known and recorded, is for them to submit a written communication, preferably to the whole council before the meeting, so it can be included in the packet or even delivered during the meeting and given to the city clerk, so it would be included as part of the record of the meeting. There's nothing illegal about sending an email to a council member or an email exchange, or a council member exchanging emails with somebody, as long as everybody recognizes that those are kind of offline communications and they won't necessarily make its way into the record if there are further proceedings, particularly at the commission and committee level. I think the point we're trying to make here is that very often it's the case that a commission action will be advisory only to the city council, or if it's a final decision, it may be appealed to the city council, particularly in the case of the planning commission. When it comes to you on appeal, the only thing you will be seeing is the administrative record. So if somebody is sending emails to a planning commissioner or a committee member, that's not going to make it into the administrative record unless the commissioner makes an effort to include it in the record somehow. But I guess we're trying to encourage people to submit written communications prior to the meeting or at the meeting, so it makes its way into the administrative record. So when it comes to the council, you have the benefit of seeing all those communications and not having someone say, well, I told this to the commission, but they ignored it. Well, unless it's part of the record, there's no way for you to know what those communications may have been. And then finally, there's a section, a couple of sections dealing with misconduct or absences from meetings without permission. And basically, we're adopting some state laws that apply primarily to council members, but basically, it's saying that if you're gone for sixty consecutive days if you're not performing your duties, then it is subject to removal. It's not an automatic removal, as distinguished from the state law that says if you're, if you miss a certain number of council meetings without, without permission, you know, basically, you might often be subject to a forfeiture of office. So we're not going that far. We're simply saying that when you take a position, you're expected to attend the meetings, to perform your duties, and you're assuming various responsibilities. And if you haven't performed those responsibilities and you haven't gotten permission to be absent, then you are subject to removal. And there's a paragraph also saying that, to recognize the overwhelming authority of the council, that even if a particular commission or committee grants permission for someone to be absent, that does not foreclose the city council from reviewing it to determine whether that absence is still legitimate, and you still can take disciplinary action if you think it's appropriate, even though the commission or the committee may have granted permission for the absence. If you feel that was not a proper absence, you can still take, take action if you think it's appropriate. And we do have some language added in dealing with reprimand or removal of a member. Right now, we have no procedures anywhere governing how that process is supposed to be conducted. We have had at least one occasion where we've run into that, and everyone was kind of playing it as we went along in terms of what the process ought to be. So what this is saying is that if there is some intent to discipline or remove a commission member or a committee member, then at least there's some notice given, there's an opportunity to respond to that accusation, if you will. The council can conduct a hearing on it if you wish. And the disciplinary action can be anything from a reprimand to an outright removal from the position. But at least we've established some kind of a process. But again, I'd want to emphasize that that process has only kicked in if we're talking about a discipline imposed for cause. There is nothing to prevent a council from removing anybody from any commission or committee without cause. All of the appointed members serve at the pleasure of the council. And it could be that you're, you know, there's simply philosophical differences. Not that the person has done anything wrong, but they may have different, different policy objectives than the council, and that's perfectly normal. So there's nothing that prevents the council from saying, well, we just don't see things eye to eye. Not that you've committed any misconduct, but you still reserve the right to remove any member of a commission or a committee without cause by a majority vote of the council. So that basically is the rules and procedures. And then the one amendment to the ordinance deals only with the Parks and Rec Commission. And as I indicated in the staff... And as I indicated in the staff report, that amendment is simply to delete one sentence that says any officer may succeed himself for another full or part term. The way we read it, it kind of sanctions or encourages a member to continue serving as the chair, and while, you know, the feeling is, we don't necessarily prohibit it, we don't want to encourage it either, and that language was viewed as kind of encouraging that to happen. So, the ordinance amendment would simply delete that one sentence, and otherwise, the other rules dealing with the Parks and Rec Commission basically deal with the organization of the commission and not its procedure, the number of members, things of that nature, the term of office. So, the rest of the rules for the Park and Rec Commission are now being modified. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Clark?
Item D on page three, under absences or failures to perform duties under, number one, I'm not sure we have this covered, but I would like to see something in there that's more spotty attendance, because the way it is right now is, we're talking about two consecutive meetings, but if you have a person that goes to one meeting, misses one, goes to one, misses one, goes to one, misses one, to me, that's an issue.
Misses three, goes to one.
No, I'm just saying that that's an issue, that in here, we don't address that. And we have guidelines for city council performance on stuff like that, and I think that we should have some consistency there.
I could say, or fails to attend meetings on a consistent basis.
And, well, that's why I'd like to see, then, some language of that, because...
It's kind of like moving your car after two hours.
Yeah, that's right. Well, the way it's written, it is kind of like that. It's like, oh, you know, or, you know, you're working for somebody, and they, well, here's the rules. Oh, okay, you can run it up to the end, and then, you know, wait until, you know, a person gets written up, and then they're on a thirty day notice, and then, you know, after thirty days, they can do it all over again, you know? And it doesn't, doesn't really address the issue, and I think what it is, is you want consistent performance from our committee members and commissioners, you know, and that's really what I want to capture, and this doesn't really capture that, so.
All right. No, I think that's a good...
Makes sense.
Yeah. That's a good point, yeah. I would, I would add that to the clarification.
So, Hal, you'll...
I think, are you happy with the language, he fails to attend regular meetings on a consistent basis?
Yeah.
Is that precise enough?
I think, I think it does, but we have specific language in the ordinance for city council members, that they can only miss no more than five or something like that meeting
We could do that, too, if you have a number in mind.
You know what I mean, without, you know, unless it's like a vacation or something like that, but you don't want to...
Yeah, you're right, because the language that Hal proposed is kind of vague, but here, now we're slamming the lid on it.
Yeah, I would prefer if you had a certain number within a period of time, it's more specific.
Whatever the, whatever the council has to abide by would be a good number for me.
Yeah, I think, I think that should be the standard of what's in the ordinance for the council, to, you know, have our commissioners abide by that.
Or maybe it should be on some kind of percentage basis, because when you're looking at a number of meetings, you know, the council meets, you know, twice a month, the planning commission does, but other committees and commissions only meet once a month, so I'm not sure a particular number is...
Yeah, five per year, that would be half the meeting.
That's twenty, that's twenty percent.
Yeah.
Really, right?
No, they meet once a month.
We're just not sure that's written down anywhere for the council.
Okay, well, we're not a number of...
I thought it, I thought that it, I thought that it was.
We'd have to check, but I'm not, I don't recall for...
Yeah, I would check in there, because I kind of recall something to the effect, and maybe it was taken from state law, but if it's two meetings a month, you got, you know, potentially twenty-four meetings a year, not that we have twenty-four meetings, but times we have more, but, I mean, if you miss five meetings, you know, it's twenty percent. That's a lot of meetings. That's a lot of information there, and a council member was that spotty, you know, I mean, it would be... So, I guess, there's no rush on this? Is there no rush on this? No timeframe? Can we check and see if we have something in there? Because I kind of recall something, and when we discussed it, um...
Well, like with the Planning Commission, they've, they're supposed to have every other two meetings a month.
Right, same as us.
But they, recently, they've been having quite a few canceled, because of, for whatever reason, I think, on behalf of staff initiating it, not on the, on the commission initiating it. So, that brings it down to, let's say, one point five. And if you're doing it on a number, that could get to be a very small amount that could initiate reprimand. And do we want to make it where it does initiate reprimand, or it may initiate reprimand?
Well, I would say it leaves, it leaves the option open, because, I mean, if you find that your team members are getting frustrated, or council members get frustrated, or it becomes real noticeable, or a citizen brings it up to you, then, you know, maybe, maybe something, you know, needs to happen.
Well, none of these is automatic, it all says subject to...
Subject, yeah, that's right there.
Right.
It's going to have to take someone to initiate something.
Right.
That's the one requirement. The other one is, if it's always an absence without permission.
Right.
So, if somebody went to the, their own commission or committee and said, "I'm going to be out of town, I'd like permission to be gone for more than sixty days," and it's granted, as far as the commission or committee is concerned, that's a permitted absence, but it still leaves the council the prerogative, if you didn't agree with that absence, you can still bring it up for review. But nothing in any of this, in terms of the disciplinary action, is imposed automatically.
Yeah, I like what Ray had proposed about taking your number and turning it into a percentage. I mean, I think, I think twenty percent sounds like a good, good number. What if we changed it to committee meetings for twenty percent of the regular scheduled meetings here she attends?
Would you want that with reference to a timeframe?
Uh, within a, a given year.
A calendar year?
Calendar year.
We'll leave the current language in there, or, leave the current language in there, or twenty percent of a given calendar year.
Or you want us to do it in a twelve month period?
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to bring this thing back to us, we can, we should be able to deal with it.
Okay, is that...
I mean, that makes sense, I mean, it's something we didn't think of, and it makes sense, so.
They have the full body of the council.
Can I, can I make a comment on the rules and procedures for commissions and committees, page one?
Sure.
On item B?
Terry, can I get clarification, I'm sorry, but can I get clarification? So, we're going to leave current language in there, and then add twenty percent of a twelve month period?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Right.
Thank you.
Basis for reprimand or...
For under conduct of meetings, role of chair, item two, and it, communications for member of public should not be generally allowed after the public hearing or public input period has been closed. I think that should be amended unless reopened by committee decision. It's, it makes it sound that once it's closed, it's closed, and it can't be reopened, and we all know that in our discussions, we have reopened a public hearing at the discretion of the committee or the council.
Anytime anybody wants to reopen it, then be careful.
Right, and so I think that the language should be amended so that, you know, whether it says unless, or may be reopened at committee's discretion?
Yeah, no problem. Also, the word generally was intended to be, uh...
Give you some room, yeah, because especially in...
The wiggle room.
But if you want to, okay, I mean, to me, it's giving a but with the, those words, that should not generally.
Okay, if, if that's the case, then I'm okay with it, I just, I, I want, I want our commissions, our committees to be able to have the leadway to, to feel that they are getting their public input, and I don't want them to feel hampered.
And I think the word generally, I mean, I can tell you, it was intended to recognize the fact that it's not uncommon for the commission and the council for that matter, even after the public hearing is closed, and someone's raising their hand, that you let them speak. So, the idea here is that, as a general rule, you want to be able to conduct your own deliberation without interruption, but it doesn't prevent the council, or the committee or commission from recognizing someone and letting them speak.
Okay. And then on item four, the role of the commission or committee chair includes, I would like to see better wording, or more professional wording, on sticking to the agenda?
Let me just tell you this list, by the way. There was a publication from the league that went through the conduct of meetings, and this was kind of pulled right out of there, I should have noted that.
And then also getting through the agenda.
What would you recommend, Terry? Kind of sticking. Stuck.
Following the agenda, or...
Adhering?
Adhering to the agenda.
There we go.
Um, same thing goes with the item bullet point below it, getting through the agenda. Um, I would say it's more addressing the agenda items. It just seemed sort of lax for something that was going into an ordinance.
I'd say that was the lead point, which I should have cleaned it up.
It was just sort of the only casual...
About proceeding, proceeding through the agenda items in an orderly and timely manner.
Yes, and I wish we could do that all the time, too, but, um, yeah, I just, I just think that it could be a little bit, um...
Yeah.
So, add proceeding?
A little bit there.
Yeah, for those two.
Good with proceeding, Hal?
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right.
I mean, how blush.
Change adhering, sticking to adhering and getting to proceeding.
Yeah, and with that on...
Well, we were tempted to take that whole league publication and attach it as an exhibit, but the thing was, what, twenty pages long? It really was just too much.
Going to stick it in an ordinance.
I'm good.
Okay, I have one small little, page two, believe it or not. On the resolution, page one of the resolution, first, whereas, where we list the Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, Open Space and... We also put, since it's now going to be one of our major committees, the Complete Street Safety Committees, because it should be dealt with on an equal basis, so why not stick it there?
That is the word, huh?
Chirp.
Stick it.
Yeah, well, I mean, official league language, right?
Complete Street Safety Committee.
Stick it in there.
League language.
Okay, anything else?
I'm good with the, with the changes.
And could I suggest, because it's going to have to come back to you for second reading on the ordinance, if you would like to introduce the ordinance tonight, we can make these revisions to the resolution, and then when the ordinance comes back at your next meeting for adoption, you'll have the revised draft.
Oh, okay.
Because the resolution only needs one, one action.
Right, right. So, then, all we need to do tonight is introduce the changes to the ordinance that involve the Parks and Rec Commission?
To motion introduce that ordinance, yeah, and then we'll adopt at the next meeting, and then you can adopt 2013-12 at the next meeting.
All right, sounds good. Someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Is this a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so, with that issue, so then we have staff reports, whole bunch.
Whole bunch.
Yeah, one, two, three, four.
Um, starting off with the Zippy Race, um, that is scheduled for this, or Sunday, I should say. The information on the race and the events that will be happening that day have been put up on our website, but just to go over it briefly, there will be a race that will start at eight thirty AM at the corner of Park Lane and Park Place. The refreshment station will be, called the Zippy Tavern, will be set up on San Francisco Avenue by the Best PTO.
Where did that come from?
It may, that's out for discussion.
Yeah, okay.
All right. It's been proposed, but we haven't decided, of course.
By the Mothers of Brisbane and the Best PTO. There will be breakfast burritos in the morning, and burgers, and turkey burgers, and hot dogs by the Brisbane Lions Club, and there's five vendors from the farmer's market that will set up along San Francisco Avenue. And there may also be some other vendors through the Excelsior Club, that I believe Council Member Lance is working on. So, that's kind of the status.
Yes, so, since you mentioned the, the refreshment garden...
Could we have the other part of it, you know, the security part?
Yeah, I would like to maybe have the chief respond to the security issues.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council members. After the horrific event that occurred at the Boston Marathon today, I wanted to just take a moment to assure you that the council, and that, and anyone who has concerns about the upcoming Zippy Race, that public safety is our main concern. We will be on heightened alert for this run due to the large number of runners, and crowds, and spectators. We will have extra patrol, we were going to hold two of the night shift officers over, but we will also have the two day shift officers there, and bring in additional personnel in for this event, during the actual run of the event. And we hope that this event will be a successful and safe one for all those attending, as well as for our community. If there's any questions the council may have?
You were talking about maybe additional staff, or what, what do you have in mind?
That's correct, we would have myself, and there would be the two night shift holding over until nine o'clock, so the race starts at seven, we figure it's going to conclude between nine and ten, so we will have those officers holding over, and they will be available. The two day shift officers will also be working, and then we'll have myself and another officer working, so there'll be a total of six of us working the event. And we'll be driving through the, the area, the closed, the street obviously will be closed for the event, but we'll, before and during and after, we'll be out, available, just looking for anything that looks out of the ordinary, anything that's suspicious. And we also encourage those that will be attending the event also just to make sure they flag us down or contact us if anything doesn't, doesn't look right. Any questions the council may have?
No, I don't.
No, thank you for addressing that, though, Lisa.
Yeah, I hope it'd be a very successful race, and many more in the future, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Maybe Clay and I will run it in the future.
Down your, uh...
I thought you were going to run with me, Clark.
Walk it.
Clark, you told me last time you were going to run with me.
Oh, yeah, oh.
Man!
Sorry, Stuart, I'm looking at you. Okay.
Yeah, you know, I just, you know, wanted to give an update on some of the, the other folks who will be setting up booths at the, at the expo. And so, we have Power Bar, Nestle Click, Hint Water, we'll be passing out water, and I've been getting a ton of emails from, from folks in the community wanting to set up a booth at, at the, at the expo. So, I'm hoping to present that Excel spreadsheet to Russ, hopefully tomorrow, because today is the cutoff day. And then, there was some, some feelings of, from the mob, of wanting to change the name of the refreshment garden, to make it a little bit more identifiable to what they will be serving, but not disrespecting the, the concerns of the council. to what they will be serving, uh, but not, uh, disrespecting the, the, the concerns of the council, and making our decision to make it a refreshment garden. And so, they have requested that they call it the Zippy Tavern. And, um, I think it's a good idea, I think it's catchy, it's fun, and, um, I hope that we can, uh, I guess amend our, our decision for naming the, the, the area, um, to be the Zippy Tavern. So, just wanted to get some feedback from, from all of you in regards to that.
I thi- I think Ray was the most, most serious about it, so maybe, uh, I'd like to hear from him. Yeah, well, I still have a problem with it, I'm, I must say. Um, I'm adding Zippy something or other is fine, um, I like that, that has a nice ring to it. But Tavern says to me alcoholic beverages. Uh, and I kind of suspect that's what they're trying to get in there, and I'm not comfortable with that. Uh, so if we can think of something that doesn't have a clear message that we're really trying to, you know, have a center for, for the sale of alcoholic beverages, uh, if we can avoid that, I'd be happier. And we could say something like, I don't know-
Zippy Adult Refreshment?
Yeah, well, you know, Zippy Beverage Center, or, or, you know, whatever, something like that would be fine with me, but I, I'm not, personally, I'm not comfortable with, with Tavern.
Well, I think that if we, if we don't make it sound like it is serving alcohol, we will have people who are coming there who don't want alcohol, you know, who want a soft drink, or who want something else, or who are underage, not knowing that it is adult refreshment, um, and alcohol. So I think it should designate that, you know, we, you, you go to the county fair and the places that are alcohol related are clearly marked, um, and it doesn't mean that the rest of it isn't a family, family type event. But you know, when you're trying to enter the beer garden, or the, the tavern, or, or whatever you want to call it, that, that's what that space is designed for. And, and that's why there's controls around it. So I think it should, um, be a name that shows that it is for adults only, because it's serving alcohol. I don't think that's promoting alcohol use, it's just letting people know that that's what is there, versus the hamburger and hot dog stand.
How about a Zippy Adult Square?
I mean, a- anyway you say it-
It has a real ring to it, Clark.
Well, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to, you know, I, it's obviously triggering something in Ray that, you know, that maybe, you know, we can find something that'll work, I don't know.
I mean, uh, you know, Terry is addressing the concerns of, of, of the mob, you know, we, having some identifier that states, yeah, this is what they're doing, and that's what they're selling, they're, they're selling alcohol to raise money for the school and-
You know, Zippy over twenty-one, I mean, uh-
Yeah. Yeah, um-
I, I don't know how else to keep others from wanting to come in just to see what's there. If it's crowded to, to get to someplace and you don't know what they're selling, you don't know where you're going.
Yeah, well, the, to me, the whole concept of being able to contain that area just for adults is not very realistic to me. And I know the chief talked about putting up some tape or something, but with all the kids around, I mean, that's not going to work, in my opinion. Uh, so it's going to be full of adults and kids, and that's just the way it's going to be, because I don't see any way that, you know, it's going to be controlled. Uh, I'd be very surprised if it were, um, unless you exclusively say, okay, we only sell alcohol here, and then we only sell non-alcohol over there, and then you have, you know, a real kind of barrier or other, but I don't, I don't see that happening in the, in the logistics of it, it just seems like it's unrealistic.
Well, if you go to any, any place that has, that's selling alcoholic beverages in a enclosed area, it'll have a no alcohol beyond this point kind of sign saying, you know, so if you buy, uh, a bottle of water, of course you can walk out with that, but if you buy a cup of beer, that's where the controls are, but-
Hal, you got any fancy lawyer words?
You know, one of the, one of the things that, um, that we could do, and it maybe addresses your, your, your issue, Ray, is that in the tavern, you can only purchase alcohol, that you can't purchase soft drinks, you can't purchase water. If you want to purchase those things, you, you step out and you go to the Lions Club and, and at their barbecue area, and you purchase it outside of, of this zone. And I, and I do, I, I do feel that the mob will, um, abide by the rules very strictly. Um, I, this is a first time event where they're doing this. They know there are some concerns on the council, and they are going to make damn well sure that, that they don't break the rules. I, I like the idea of having some signage that says, you know, that, that, you know, no alcohol can leave the premises, um, IDs must be shown, you know, and then it's clearly marked that, um, we're not going to allow anybody who is underage in that area, even if it's little kids, that, you know, we, we, we should be strict with that. I think it can, I think it can be, uh, managed properly, and, and at the level that, uh, we all hope that, that it would be managed.
Nodding his head yes, so. I mean, I hear you, and, um, let's put it this way, if the rest of you are comfortable with that, then, you know, I don't want to, I'm just the dissenter of one at this point, it seems like. I'm still not happy, but I won't raise objection to the point of, you can't let this happen, you know, I'm not that- strident about my concern. I, I'm, you know, I have no doubt that the mob is a responsible group, that's not a part of my concern, as I said last time, at all.
We're concerned with outsiders.
We're concerned about outsiders being whiff of it and coming in and messing up our party, so to speak, that's what I'm concerned about. You know that. And, so I, I just very concerned about, you know, sending out the wrong message to a broader public, and if you all are still, you know, think it'll be okay, then I'll still have my reservations, but, you know.
I think-
Let's see, let's try it.
And, and I think it's better to have it really known, I mean, I don't think you should put a big neon sign that's beer, you know, flashing lights over here, but, you know, I think it needs to be known what they're selling there, so that people don't try to go in that aren't there for that refresh. So, I would be okay with it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Ray, for, uh, spending a little bit there. And then, um, Car- Carolyn, uh, I thought you said there was going to be ten Farmers Market vendors, and Clay mentioned five, so how many are we going to get?
Ten would be everybody.
Ten would be everybody, that's what they, that's what the email said.
At the Thursday market, this past Thursday, Jerry took a survey of the vendors that were there, and he got five confirmed. So he said five to eight, I just want to err on the side of caution and only suggest that there would be five at this time, and we haven't heard from any other vendors since.
Okay, and then we were thinking about putting the, the Farmers Market vendors in the gazebo, or it-
That was the original thought, when there were thought to be ten coming.
Yes.
Because then there would be more space for them to set up, and, um, I think with the, um, Mothers of Brisbane and Best PTO, and the Lions being along San Francisco, that's kind of where all the foot traffic's going to be taking place, and so that would be where the Farmers Market vendors would want to be as well.
Okay, yeah, you know, I think if we can accommodate all the folks that are going to be participating, for sure, but we might need the, the gazebo space, so, uh, let's, let's, let's see, I mean, it's not a big deal, I mean, hey, if we can get them all there, you know, let's do it, um, it'd be more of a party.
Yeah, just let us know.
All right, thanks. All right.
Okay, we all hope for a great event.
Yes. And hopefully it won't be over by the time I wake up on today morning.
All right, um, policy committee information?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, last Thursday and Friday, I think it was last Thursday or- Last Thursday and Friday, um, actually, it's the week before, I'm sorry, about ten days ago, the policy committees for the League of California Cities, um, met down in Pasadena. Um, we have, um, between staff and council, four members of our, um, organization that participate in the League Policy Committees. Policy Committees, as you're aware, um, make recommendations to the League of California Board of Directors with regards to legislation, um, legislation that's being proposed by other parties, as well as legislation that the League wants to propose. Uh, so we all met, um, for those two days, uh, down there, or we, we were all down there for one day, one of the two days. Um, there were a number of items that, um, I think, uh, are moving forward in the legislature, including, um, uh, some, um, uh, legislation to, um, create a statewide plastic bag, um, legislation. The League's position has been to try to make sure that, uh, local ordinances can be stricter, if, um, local communities want to have a stricter, um, program. But there are about four different bills that are actually working their way through that. There was quite a bit of, um, discussion in the committee that I'm on, um, having to do with, uh, SEQA, um, reform legislation, so-called SEQA reform legislation. Uh, this is an issue that I think had a lot of momentum at, uh, one point in time, as you may recall, was actually kind of a last minute item in the last legislative session, and then the legislature decided that, um, they'd better, um, take some time with it. Um, it's reappeared, uh-
Really?
They, it's reappeared this, uh, this year, um, and I think had some initial, um, momentum, um, including some support from the governor's office, but it appears, from everything that's being said right now, that, uh, it's likely that there's not going to be a lot done in this session. There was a lot of debate within the, the Environmental Quality Committee, which I'm on, and, um, I got myself selected to a, a smaller group that's going to be working on, um, the, um, actual League policies, um, or recommendations to the League Board with regards to the League policies. So, uh, we'll see how that, uh, that moves forward. Um, a lot of different bills having to do with, um, so-called, uh, post redevelopment, um, cleanup, uh, post redevelopment, um, new, um, opportunities for tax increment funding, and seen, um, along those lines, uh, Stuart and I had an opportunity to meet with the League, uh, staff a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we're going to be following up with a meeting with, um, Assemblyman Mullin and, uh, League staff in Sacramento, um, sometime in the near future to kind of go over specifically, um, our issues with regards to brownfields and, um, a kind of a, a kind of a unique nature of our situation. So, we'll see how that works out. Um, the legislature is really kind of at a point in time where there's not a lot of, um, uh, actual decisions being made that will come, uh, in a fury later on in the year, in the June-July period of time. Um, so, uh, most of the bills are just being monitored at this point, and, um, I don't know, Stuart and, um, and Cliff were also part of this, so if they wanted to add anything to that. I did ask Randy, who's on the Transportation Committee, um, and, uh, he indicated that there's a couple of major bills that the Transportation Committee has, um, a recommendation to watch on. One of them is an active transportation program, which would collapse, it's a proposal from the governor, which would collapse, um, five existing transportation programs, uh, into one account. It's kind of, sounds more like a, um, a budget, uh, effort. Excuse me. And then another bill that would, um, require, um, or specify a minimum funding for state, safe routes to school program, and require that twenty percent of the funds be directed to non-infrastructure related activities, such as public awareness and outreach, that's being promoted by, uh, or, uh, proposed by, um, um, Tom Amiano from San Francisco. So those, uh, both of those bills have a, um, a watch recommendation from the, um, from that committee. Uh, the committees will be meeting again in, um, June, and, um, that's kind of the session where we kind of really ramp up to the, what's happening in the legislature, and, uh, what's likely to move forward, and what, uh, you know, what isn't. Um, we'll learn more at that particular point in time. So I'll turn it over to Cliff and Stuart, if they've got anything else they want to add, they're on a separate committee.
Um, yeah, on the committee, uh, economic development, housing-
Community.
Community.
Housing.
Community housing. Economic development. Um, obviously, the infrastructure bills for RDA is, was a big issue. Um, there was a little bit of discussion of the SEQA. There was a conversation about the bill coming, uh, that's proposed on homelessness and the rights of homeless people. That has so little support that even the person proposing the bill doesn't support it. It's always fun when you hear that one. What? It's a homeless bill, it really is.
It is a homeless-
Um, there was also an issue about, um, preserving agricultural land, which the, um, members of the Central Valley had, um, very strong opinions on. And it was, you know, I think from their perspective, there was a real home rule issue, about, you know, what is, what rights do the state have in determining how, um, land should be zoned, I think from a home rule perspective, I think even, you know, you know, whereas we may want to sit there and preserve agricultural land from a home rule perspective, we may be a little bit hesitant to have the state starting to determine what zoning should or should not be allowed in different areas of cities. And, uh, Cliff spoke to that issue at the committee meeting. Uh, I think those are the major topics that were covered in the committee.
Yeah, you know, uh, Clay talked about Mullin, and he has that, uh, proposed bill to be reimbursed. If you can address that, Stuart. Loans, I think those loans that have been made, you-
Right, I mean, it was, um, it was the RDA one, where if you had a loan, um, I think it's clarifying language from fourteen eighty-four, where if you have a loan outstanding that, if it's approved by the Oversight Board, that it would be reimbursed. Similar to the very, it's very similar to the languages out there, but just trying to get it better codified, because as, you know, as we keep reporting, the Department of Finance keeps trying to find, you know, innovative ways to take redevelopment, uh, money back for the state, and the Mullins Bill is trying to, um, safeguard city loans. So that was, that was the issue. And then there was, um, briefed a conversation, I think, on the, um, enterprise zone issue, the, um, um, that's Senator Hill's bill, um, which, you know, we've expressed our support for Senator Hill, and the League has expressed their concern, uh, because they're, they see any, um, they see it as a slippery slope kind of perspective, that any change to enterprise zones may be the elimination of enterprise zones. And that's their concern, and that's why they have a different opinion than the, our city might have on this issue. And they're aware of that difference that we have.
Yeah, I, I think the other key issue there for the League is that they were, um, concerned about the sixteen dollar an hour, um, rate for pay, um, being in, uh, Hill's bill, um, so, that's, they raised that as concern, I-
Yeah, yeah.
Seems to me, actually, like it would be good public policy to promote higher paying jobs, and that's why you'd want to have the enterprise zone, but-
Yeah, well, Stuart, you're saying that sixteen dollars an hour equates to about thirty-two thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, it's, it's-
Right, so, uh, and, and, and here's the attorney who's representing the League stating that, well, yeah, we're, we're against the sixteen dollars an hour, because, you, you know, we, we want to be able to provide, um, uh, you know, incoming level jobs, right, for people. And they say, well, you know, you're making thirty-two thousand dollars a year, that, that, that should be, you know, one of the first jobs that you get if you're, you know, you, you, you've, you've done a little bit of schooling and you're trying to-
Got your PhD.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you know, after these meetings, you know, Stuart and I, you know, it's- Well, yeah, I mean, you, you know, after these meetings, you know, Stewart and I, you know, talking, Stewart made a, just a really funny comment about, well, are we trying to compete with China? You know, I mean, it's, it's true. I mean, you, what, who are you competing with? And, um, you know, people should be paid a living wage. And I, I mean, I, I had a conversation with, with Jerry, uh, on Friday, and, uh, 'cause we got an email from Kirsten, I forgot her last name, but she's the attorney that represents the League for this Policy Committee. And, um, and she's the one who made the comment about these, these entry-level positions, trying to keep them, uh, very low, low-paying. And, um, it's true, the League's position is to not have any amendments to the enterprise zones. Because she, she's focused, and I guess maybe this position of the League is, uh, that the governor is against enterprise zones, and he wants to get rid of them. And so, any, any changes somehow relates to the governor's will to get rid of these enterprise zones. Um.
Would the union support it?
So, uh, yes, and, and, uh.
The unions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, so I told, I told Jerry that, uh, you know, this is a, a subject that I wanna take on with this committee. And, 'cause I think it's a good bill. Um, is it gonna bring VWR back to us? No. But it's just like when something happens to, you know, a, you know, a parent's child. You know, it's not gonna bring that, 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 that son or daughter back, but you don't want it to happen to somebody else.
It heightens awareness.
Absolutely.
And heightening awareness is, is good for us. And if we have something that feels wrong, we have a duty to try to help change it for the future, even if it's not our city that benefits, it's our society.
Well, it's a way of really making good policy, because the way the policy's currently written, it's a double-edged sword, uh, to the taxpayers. Is one, what happened specifically in Brisbane is you took one group of working folks and put them on unemployment, and you took another group and hired a bunch of folks, whether they were working or not, at a lower wage. But then you subsidize a corporation with these thirty-seven thousand dollar tax credits.
Yeah.
And so.
For creating new jobs, right?
That tax credit, and the people being on unemployment fall on the taxpayers. That's who takes the hit.
And then the income.
The corporation.
Right, the state's income tax, the state's losing money there, too.
Yeah, exactly.
So, yeah, it's, um, but yeah, so it'd be interesting to see. You, you, like, Clay had, had talked about, I mean, when, you know, the League's position is, is that local control. And, and it, it, like, it all goes back to local control, and, and sometimes, uh, you know, that, that, that drives their decisions, even if, uh, you know, a good policy bill.
This almost sounds like more paranoia about the governor than about the local control.
Yeah, like, you know, and.
Well, after RDA, I could understand that.
Yeah.
There's a number of cities that support the enterprise zones, and I think, you know, we just need.
'Cause I think there would be recipients.
You're right, yeah. But, I mean, it's, you know, cities in the Central Valley, uh, cities, uh.
They're happy to take somebody else's job.
Yeah, Long Beach, I think, is another city that's.
Well, it's like all this industrial policy competition between cities, trying to see who can provide the most subsidy to a corporation or manufacturer, whatever, to move to their city. You know, I mean, that, that's going on all over the country.
Yeah.
Can I, uh?
Go ahead.
Talk about one of the, are we finished with the?
Yes.
League? But one bill, one bill's coming up, I, I think with, um, uh, Assemblyman Amiano, it was in the Chronicle today, and.
Saw that.
Clay and I, we've talked about this numerous times, and it has to do with, uh, Proposition thirteen on mainly commercial property, you know, um, or corporate commercial property. And this is something that the legislature can change. And I think Quentin Cop, uh, attempted to do this back in the mid-nineties, is, uh, the legislature has the power to change what designates the sale of a property. And his bill was that if a publicly traded stock turns over more than fifty percent, that constitutes a sale, and therefore, all their property can be reassessed to the current value. See, the unintended consequence of, I think, of Proposition thirteen was that it was for all properties, but it was really meant for.
Homeowners.
Grandma and grandpa to be able to stay in their home.
Yes.
You see, but that has an expiration date, where corporations never expire, they never die. And even if a corporation's sold, there's a big loophole in there that allows companies to come in and take that over, and still not reassess the property. And with, uh, regular property with us, like Ray, for instance, and Anya can, you know, give their house to, to their child, and, and she'll be able to get the Proposition thirteen tax breaks, but she can't give it to their grandchildren on the next phase, because it expires. It can only be passed one generation. So, there's an expiration date on, for residential property, but corporate commercial property, no expiration.
Forever.
But anyway, uh, I think, uh, Assemblymember Amiano is trying to address this now, which, you know, I'm actually happy to see.
I'd love to see it happen.
This is what's something I feel that Governor Brown should've addressed, instead of going after redevelopment. And this really would solve California's problems, from a fiscal point, I think.
Over time.
Yeah, over time.
Yeah. Yeah, right now, the, the, apparently, the, the state is no longer in deficit. They have, uh, a little bit of a surplus, or, I mean, I guess it depends on how you, uh, look at the numbers.
How you do the accounting.
It depends how much they're grabbing from redevelopment still, huh?
Now, has, has, has Amiano's bill, um, been written, or is it still in a draft?
It's, uh, it was in the Chronicle today, uh, on the front page, so, um, I think it's, it's been written. I think it's in a, a committee, uh.
Okay, I'd just like to follow it, and I think it's important, and it's a change that's.
I think it's three eighty-eight, is that, is that what it is, Assembly Bill three eighty-eight, or?
Is it? Okay. Thank you.
Just to let you know that Amiano is the, uh, the writer of that homeless, uh, so.
That I, that, that. That he doesn't even support.
That he doesn't even support.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, I, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I think, you know, it would be great to, uh, you know, once that, that, that bill comes out, you know, and it, and it, it looks good to us to.
To sup- to publicly support it?
Yeah, to have a resolution to support that.
Well, I, I think.
Yeah, I think.
Thirteen has needed some revamping, um, for quite a while, so.
Yeah. Okay, um, things we need to keep watch on. And also brings to our attention that we are not necessarily always in harmony with the League's positions. And I hope they understand that, uh, you know, it's okay for cities to be on a different path, on occasion.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. They do.
Okay. All right, so, um, thank you. Uh, report on, uh, where we are in terms of the Complete Street Safety Committee, the startup process?
Okay, um, as you recall, back in March, you formed the Complete Street Safety Committee, and, um, letters were sent out to the current members of the Traffic Advisory Committee last week. Um, they were talked to by phone before you even did that, but I sent a formal letter to all of them, um, asking, telling that the council encourages them to be on this new committee, and so, I'm waiting to hear back from them. I've heard back from one who cannot do it, but I'm hoping that the other three can, so. Um, and in addition to that, the Brisbane City News will have an article on the May first edition, um, telling the public about this new committee, and, um, asking for people to apply. And so, uh, the deadline has been set for May thirty-first, since it comes out May first. And, um, it looks like they're thinking of meeting on the first, the first Wednesday of every month at six-thirty. So, that's the current date. Um, I imagine after the council does the interview process for the applicants, that maybe they'll start to meet ju- in July, is what we're hoping, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Update on Plan Bay Area process.
Is that one Bay Area plan? Pardon me? Is that one Bay Area plan?
Yeah, that's what it refers to, right.
Yeah.
But there's a process undergoing now, because both the plan and the EIR are available, right?
Correct, and it, we have until, um, um, May sixteenth to actually make comments. So, uh, the mayor and I were talking about just putting this on the agenda tonight, just to explain to people what the process will be. So, it will go be.